I think you are, too.
Good evening. Welcome to City Council meeting of Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019. Can I have a roll call, please?
Kay Coniff here, Salem Derby.
President.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kozinski.
Here.
Bill Lynch.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zerratt.
Here.
Okay, could we please stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion for the minutes of the meeting of September 18th and 25th? Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion's pass. Public speak time. So let me tell you, Phil, any way other way the meeting is going to go tonight. We did. I said both. I did them both as one. Is that okay?
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Public speak. The meeting is going to go tonight. We have public speak time. If there's someone here who would like to speak to something other than the Roe resolution, this will be your time. Then we have a certain part of the meeting that by law we're supposed to start as close as we can to 6:15. We will be tackling those topics. Once that is done, then we are going to move rules where that resolution is to the top of the regular reports. And I'll open up again a second public speak time for people who would like to speak to that particular topic. So again, we are at public speak time now. So if anyone would like to address the council other than the Roe resolution, this is your opportunity. Okay, I guess so. Communications from elected boards of, actually, the boards committee. We did get a request, which is typically a yearly request of Board of Assessors to schedule a tax classification public hearing. Counselor Rist?
I'd like to move that that be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second. A motion, a second, to move to the Finance Committee, the Board of Assessors' request to schedule a tax classification. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion passes. We do have under announcements and communications, we did form a naming committee for a walkway in the baseball parks. And I know Counselor Gomez was on that ad hoc committee. So Counselor Gomez, if you could give us a report on that naming?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We just have a meeting like a half hour ago, and all the members were there. We vote a five to zero to approve it. So everybody, some of the people have some concerns about, because they're going to install two benches in a waterfront in the middle. And the concern was for the safety, if the safety vehicle could be through. So that way, if something happened to the fields, there was access to go there. And they say yes. They measure everything, and everything fit well for the emergency vehicle. Besides that, we made a motion, and we approve it, five to zero. Before I made the motion, the director, John, is here. If anyone have a question to him, so he's here to answer any question if you guys want. If no, I'm ready to do the motion.
Are you going to tell us the new name and part of your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
All right. I move to the City Council to approve the naming of the Section 3 walkway and Non-Etihad Park to be the Ben Campbell Memorial Walkway, as recommended by the ad hoc naming committee.
Second.
A motion, a second, to name the walkway as just described. Any additional questions or comments on this naming? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion passes. Counselor Rist, did you say?
I have one small announcement. As you all know, October is breast cancer awareness, and our fire department is once again selling various T-shirts and sweatshirts to support breast cancer, the fight for breast cancer. And they're very nice. And if you have one, you should be wearing it all the time. Anyway, I'd like you all, if you're from East Hampton, just go over to the fire department, and you can get a new T-shirt or a sweatshirt. It's very nice. So just wanted to announce that, since I have a rather attentive audience.
Counselor, I saw Counselor Peak first. Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. So one thing that I did last year was I went to the Mass Municipal Association annual meeting and trade show in Boston. This is something that I've tried to get sort of more into, because I think that there's a lot, there's 350 other communities in the Commonwealth, and they're all trying to solve a lot of the same problems. So I think it's really valuable to sort of reach out and actually connect with our peers in other parts of the state. That's going to be happening this year, January 24th and 25th. So I guess, yeah, next year, January 4th to 25th. You know, for anyone who's lucky enough to be serving next term, I would really recommend, if you can, it's a little pricey to go, but I'd really recommend that you go, because it's just loaded full of cool seminars and opportunities to meet with people who are working on a lot of the same stuff. And I'll be definitely going. So if we want to arrange a little, you know, last time I was, you know, Chicopee came in, and they were all walking together in a big pack. And I'm here, and I'm the only East Hampton one. So I'm hoping this time we can do something like that. So, yeah, just pitching it.
Can you register after November 5th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you really that concerned?
Counselor Zerratt?
Just a couple of announcements, not all tied together. This Saturday, October 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It says 9:00 to 3:00 a.m. I should probably tell them to correct that. It sounds like a pretty long fair. There'll be a craft fair sponsored by the Friends of the East Hampton Council on Aging. That'll be over at the C in your center there on Union Street. A big variety of crafters, I think I heard 20 or so that will be available there. Support your seniors. Also, apropos of what Counselor Rist had announced, the firefighters' union puts together a nice brew fest every year. I want to say this is the third annual, possibly. It will be next Thursday, October 10th, at the Boylston Room at 6:00 p.m. It conflicts with another event that's going on at the library, but I think people can find ways to attend both. And then, I just wanted to acknowledge, too, we're in the midst of the Jewish High Holidays. We just finished up with the first couple days of Rosh Hashanah, which is the Jewish New Year. And we're heading into Yom Kippur, the Day of Atonement. So it's an opportunity for people of the Jewish faith, and certainly everyone of our community, to reflect on the year past, and think about their actions, and think about how they'd like to change those in the year to come. And apropos of that, and apropos of the resolution that we passed at the last council meeting regarding what we felt was unreasonable detention of children at the camps on the border, there is a service that's being held this Sunday. It will start in Pulaski Park. It's a service, there's a ritual during the holiday of Rosh Hashanah called Tashlich, where you cast away your sins as bread. But in this case, people will be marching from Pulaski Park and meeting at the boat launch by the Calvin Coolidge Bridge by the bike path at 5:00 p.m. to cast stones in the water, symbolic of the sins they believe our government is participating in and illegally detaining people at the border. So I'll be attending. I encourage other people to attend. It's a great interfaith opportunity to, a call to justice, and to support some of the work we're doing here from the council. So that's all.
Any other comments? Counselor Kozinski?
Just a couple of brief notes. I understand that the Legion will be having their 100th anniversary this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Their festivities planned at noon on both days, and longer festivities on Sunday with speakers. So that's an important event to honor those who've served. And that the fire department this weekend, on October 6th, will be having an open house from 10:00 to 2:00.
Great. Thank you.
This weekend.
Yeah, it's a busy, it's a busy weekend. Okay, Mayor Communications, I believe, are all set, then?
Good evening. To kind of add further context to Counselor Kozinski's comments around the American Legion, today, tonight, right before this meeting, we dedicated POW MIA Table for One, which is a very moving, small table setup with many items on it that symbolize very specific things for those who have served and did not return, and those who are still, were still hoping, and hope eternal, have not returned. I would encourage everyone to go down one floor. It's by the elevator right outside of City Clerk's office to read what each item symbolizes. I think the most important thing is that the table is purposely very small. The chair can barely fit at it, to remind us all of that lonely prisoner holding up what they can of the dignity, and their fealty to our country. Super moving. The Public Safety Complex is working with Commander Miller and LaBarge over at our Post 224 Main, Post 224, to put one over at the Public Safety Complex. There are, around that table, the full table setup for all the branches of service will be on display during the open houses on Saturday and Sunday. And our, which I did not realize, our own Legion is 100 years old, and started right after World War I. And the, I want to thank Counselor Gomez and Kozinski to come to the, for coming to the dedication just a little while ago, as well as many of our department heads and employees also joined us. A very enlightening part of the Legion is this year, with the 100th year anniversary, they passed an internal resolution that recognizes and makes eligible those who served our country during the Cold Wars. Because up until this point, if you served during the Cold War, you could not become a member of the Legion or benefit from what they give, which is quite a lot of scholarships, and support for housing, and heating, and education, and health care for veterans and their families. Quick reminder that on Saturday, October 12th, Non-Etihad Park is Harvest Fest. This week, John Mason and I will be on the mayor's update to walk you through all the exciting activities on the 12th. But it's always not to be missed. And I believe that the Yappy Valley Dog Show is happening again. So if not yet registered, I'm just saying, President McCoy, maybe you have some yappy dogs. It's just, it's rumor. No goats allowed.
Oh, discrimination.
No, it's a defined, it's a, I'm not even going there. Nope, 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 nope. And lastly, I just want to, several residents and some of our small businesses had approached me with a movement that is going around the valley, and really the country, about energy efficiency. And we've talked a lot about that. And I'm just offering a simple proclamation based on the request of residents and small businesses that designates October 2nd as Energy Efficiency Day, and this month of October is Energy Efficient Month. Whereas smarter energy uses reduces emissions that harm our health, pollute our environment, and warm our climate. And whereas cutting energy waste can save U.S. families approximately $500 per household annually. And whereas implementing energy efficiency and clean energy policies and programs helps boost economic opportunity and job creation while continuing to move forward towards a more sustainable future. And whereas, together the residents of East Hampton can continue to contribute to our sustainability efforts by learning more about energy efficiency and practicing smarter energy use in their daily lives. And then, therefore, I, Nicole LaChapelle, Mayor of the City of East Hampton, do by join the people of East Hampton, declaring October 2nd Energy Efficiency Day, and the month of October Energy Efficiency Month. So this, along with other resolutions that my office has put forward, are always available for review. I don't think the link is repaired or updated yet, but we talked at last meeting around resolutions, Proclamation Certificate of Achievements, and other certificates to memorialize someone or events in the city. And there's a link already on my page that you can click, and it kind of walks through what each one of those documents, how it's defined, and how you may request one, and the time to get it. So I would just encourage members of the public who want to take care of, take advantage of that, or members of this body, that's, the link is right now on my mayor page. We're updating it to include some new language. And when it's completely new, we'll get it on the landing page for a couple of, a couple of days. Add some questions. Oh, quickly, we submitted all the updated accident reports and data, full accident reports to Mass DOT, to our district manager, Rich Massey. We are hoping to have a meeting with him to see what other information that he may need, we may need to meet the standards on the state level for a light at South and Main. And when I receive that information, or know we have a full body of information, I will notify President McCoy and Counselor Gomez to come before the Public Safety meeting and just present, and let folks know where we are on that. I know you've been talking about it for a while.
Counselor, I mean, Counselor. Sorry about that.
Are you becoming mayor, Joe?
We had a conversation today. Is there, is there any personnel information you're bringing forward, or is that going to be held off to a different time? Did you want to bring that, what you're going to bring that up today?
Oh, if you want me to bring it up. Yeah, I wasn't sure. Yes. Yeah, and it's really a joy and light in my day. I'm not joking. So I made an offer, and it was accepted to Jen Gallant to be treasurer of our city. Before you have the appointment letter, as well as her resume, very qualified. She's very excited about what's going on in the city. I wanted to put her name forward as soon as possible, so she could attend the Appointment Subcommittee, and also be able to report to work here by the end of October. I'm, of course, willing not to trump or try to hasten due process by this council. We'll do a temporary appointment based on the schedule. But I would encourage you to take a look, and I look forward, and she looks forward, to meeting you at appointment, and of course, available to the full council.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Counselor Coniff, did you want to make a motion to move that to this Subcommittee?
I can do that. You want me to do it now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to move Jennifer Gallant as treasurer to, for the term expiration 12/31/2021, to the Appointment Subcommittee.
Second. A motion, a second, to move to Subcommittee, that discussion of the treasurer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion passes. Counselor Rist, did you have a?
Yes, Mayor, regarding South and Main Street, I haven't followed up with Joe and with DPW. Have you heard anything about our flashing stop signs? Has he brought to you a better estimate?
I just saw Joe today.
Yeah, he's back.
Yeah. And I was up in the Berkshire. So we'll, we have an ongoing email chain back and forth about prices and whatnot. But I don't have an update, like, planned for.
Okay. So, but you're handling that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Because even though we want that light, I know that's going to take a while, flashing stop signs.
Absolutely. No, I'm not substituting one for another. I think we all know if Mass DOT said yes tomorrow, we would all be campaigning for reelection. No offense, but they, they're very busy.
Counselor Peak?
Just to that, if we do get a flashing stop sign there, are there things that we could, in the case of getting a light, maybe move to a different intersection at some later point? It seems like that's.
I'm not, I'm not against that at all. I, one, don't know how permanent or not permanent the flashing lights are. They certainly can be moved to another city street, because we control those. I'd also be interested in seeing, well, I think that, I think we all agree that the flashing stoplights don't fix the problem by all, and just wait, raises awareness. I wonder if the light plus the flashing lights for a while slows things down there before moving them. I think it's a conversation, I'm not opposed to moving them, and would defer to, you know, the Director of DPW, that we could move them safely and not break them, and whatnot. I don't know enough about the equipment, but I think that, you know, was it, upcycle is good. New word today. Upcycle.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I move that the public hearings be open.
Second. A motion, a second, open public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion passes. First one we have is departmental transfer. Counselor Rist?
Yes, we received a request from the Personnel Director to deal with a transfer for liability insurance and city liability insurance to workman's comp insurance. The reason for this is very good news, in that when the budget was developed last year, certain line items were placed into the areas of premium cost for insurance. But our Personnel Director took the time to get new quotes for premiums. This saved us a considerable amount of money in certain areas, and allowed us to make sure we have enough in other areas. So this transfer is not anything from, like, free cash. It's money from one insurance to the other. And I want to compliment Jane for getting this done. We moved from MIA Insurance to Trident Insurance, correct? And I just like to have Jane come up and explain this a little more to those of you that want to know, because this is a good thing. We saved some money in premiums. One of the things she mentioned, I'd like her to go into the detail, is that we were paying insurance for vehicles that were no longer on the road. That's an example of what was being done. So, thank you, Jane.
Sure.
So just explain this better than I.
Since I've been here, the mayor's office has asked me to take on the insurance for the city. So one of the first things we did was look at what was being, what our costs were. So I got a new bid, came in substantially lower. In the 111F area, which is Police and Fire Workers' Comp, we are saving about $15,000 a year. In liability and workers' comp, we're saving close to $30,000 a year. With each section, we, my office looked at, for example, the fleet. We took on what vehicles were listed on the insurance policy. We found that there were vehicles that weren't covered, and there were vehicles that we no longer owned. So all of them have been updated. We then moved on to the property, the real property. We were able to provide council with a list of city-owned properties. And we're now working on the equipment. Anything with a value, a replacement value over $2,500 will be put on the insurance. And anything that's not of that value will be removed. This is just moving some of the money from, as Counselor Rist has said, from the liability insurance area to the workers' comp area.
School-related. So you go into why we are not doing that, correct?
Correct. It's not that our claims have gone up. In fact, knock on wood, we are in very good shape. The new carrier is pleased. We were able to get a good report for loss experience. So our rates are good. It's just the way it was budgeted in the past, and the way that we're breaking out the premiums now, just required some movement of the money.
Are there any questions for the Personnel Director on this? Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Rist? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there were from the public who would like to speak to this appropriation. Again, it's just appropriation alone. Be the opportunity. Okay.
Counselor Rist? I would like to make the following motion for council approval of a interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $18,000 to be transferred from school liability insurance, $16,000, and city liability insurance, $2,000, for a total of $18,000, to be transferred to school-related workman's comp insurance, $18,000, for the following purpose: payment of the FY '20 workers' compensation premium invoice.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, to approve the departmental transfer of $18,000 for the payment of FY '20, 20 school-related workers' comp. Additional questions or comments?
Just that it was approved by the Finance Committee, three to zero.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I believe Counselor Derby, remaining?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three items. The first one is cannabis equity, which is continued from our last meeting. Counselor Zerratt asked to make a brief statement on this before we move forward. So I turn it over to him.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Derby. As many of you here potentially know, and for those who don't, we have been working on a proposal to increase the total number of cannabis retail special permits from six to eight, with a carve-out within that, within that eight for three, what we're calling equity applicants. The intention here is for East Hampton to help pave the way, for the state mandate to create more space for economic empowerment and equity applicants, and also establish East Hampton as a place where one can have these businesses, and be a smaller business owner, and an industry that's rapidly becoming dominated by these large multi-state corporations, and they're currently a cash-only situation. We've done a lot of work on this as the ordinance Subcommittee. We have a version here that the ordinance Subcommittee voted on three to nothing. We've had some solicitor review. That was very thorough. Again, I'm continuing to really appreciate the work that Attorney Tanner does for our city. We came forward with a final version with some, with some input from the CCC. But this kind of work right now is uncharted waters. There's only a couple other cities that have done this so far, Somerville and Cambridge. Cambridge actually did something very interesting, where they placed a moratorium on non-equity for a couple of years. And I think Boston's also working on a licensing system. But the issue with these types of things, especially when there's really no good legal case law, is at the end of the day, you can open up the city to some liability if the, the topic hasn't been thoroughly legally vetted. So we came up with a pretty robust ordinance. And I really appreciate all the work from my co-committee members, Chairman Derby and Counselor Coniff. I had a really good conversation with the mayor this morning, and I think she expressed some really reasonable concerns that, well, the work here looks good, that there's potentially still some really in-depth legal work that needs to be done because of the, kind of the new frontier that we're facing here. And that there's not, because of a lot of other things going on in the city, we just don't have the availability to explore this from a legal perspective just yet. So I'm not going to make the motion yet. But my intention tonight is to request the council to remove this from a public hearing without prejudice, and send it back to Subcommittee, to keep it on the agenda, to continue discussion. And I also wanted to give the mayor an opportunity to speak to this, too. I really think that our thought around this issue is, makes a lot of, made a lot of sense to me. And I want to make sure that we're moving together as a city in a way that's smart around this issue.
Thank you, Counselor Zerratt. I would, thanks for the opportunity to speak, and all of the work that is done by the council and the Subcommittee around this issue. When first proposed by the body, I said at that time, I am very much for this. I think it's, it's really a fantastic opportunity for such a new, unique industry, that we can start from, you know, the very beginning, and, and make sure that the footing is not only equal, but equitable. And I, and I do think the language that's before us right now does exactly that. It is kind of a, a new frontier of law. And while exciting, when I weigh that with all of the development going on in town, and obligations we have with the many grants and legals, I would like to just continue the conversation with the earnest promise to look at legal resource allocation towards this. And, and also, maybe, you know, there will be a little more case law that will help us down the road. But I would not want anyone to come away with the impression that it's not something I, I support. And the language that we have to date is, it's really strong and very holistic. So, thank you.
Counselor Rist?
Can I ask the mayor? Mayor, as I understand it, then you want better legal opinion, but we don't have enough case law to get legal opinion in which the city attorney would say, yes, this is able to be defended in court, or yes, I approve this. Is that my correct interpretation of what you just said?
So the, no, I don't think we need a better.
Or more thorough?
Thorough, you know, it, a thorough examination, I think, has occurred by both our legal counsel and the CCC weighing in, and, and the Subcommittee work. The concern, the typical review of an ordinance, and, and how that best serves the city, and the residents, and the council's intent, is just very hard to determine right now, because there is no case law. And, and also, we've got this, like, I mean, it's really inside baseball, but it's this fuzzy line of, we're using a lot of definitions that we believe in that are very appropriate. But when it comes down to it, a lot of it ties back to federal law. And, and as far as looking at those quotas, and affidavits, and whatnot, and making sure that when somebody says they're going to when somebody says they're going to do what they are going to do, or they are formed as an entity the way, the administrative or the compliance of that, I really want to work through. And it's not a quick answer. It's not like, oh, this would happen or that would happen. And that, can it be done? It can. At this point, the estimate of hours the city attorney has given to do that is substantial. I mean, we would, we would be on the, you know, the cutting edge, but I, the cutting edge is sharp and expensive.
Well, I'm not sure who could answer. I'm sorry. Mayor or Counselor Zaret, you did say there are other communities that were moving forward with this. Have some of those community, if those communities move forward, would that be something that the city attorney could use to examine if they felt comfortable with similar language that we could? My reason for this is I don't want to incur a huge city attorney bill, but I also don't want to delay this for a long time because then there will be a push to extend our six current capable licenses, am I right, six numbers, to more, to get more people in before we do some equity licenses. So I would like to see this personally done sooner rather than later. So I'm wondering if those cities and towns that are looking at this, if they approve it, would that give you more clarity on whether you could do that?
I mean, Counselor Zaret can certainly speak to this. I would think, yes, the more that this is enacted and, you know, fleshed out in other, you know, communities and even at the state level, on the commission's level, I think it gets more and more clear. And then we filter down to how it interacts with our charter. I mean, I would not want to rush such a fresh piece of law at the city's expense down the road. I would also say, and I think I said it to this board and Counselor and I spoke about it, we have six licenses. I've signed five host community agreements. We have one retail dispensary open. I mean, it indicates to me, and I'll dive a little bit off-topic and then step aside, but the, we need to really look at where the industry is and crafting something like this with maybe not even, like, to see where a baseline is in the industry kind of weighs in the back of my head because I want to make sure that the doors are open as many people, that's less of a legal review. But that said, and just to be clear that folks don't think I have a new sudden resistance to social equity in the cannabis industry, when approached about social consumption and being a pilot community, I was very interested in that as the executive branch of government, seeing how cannabis has rolled out in the extreme expense to our community before anybody opens, the hundreds of hours that we have put into those four host community agreements that aren't retail establishment, and I would say by no, not that those four entities don't want to be open, but just that's the reality of, to put the city through that sort of lack of defined nature path forward, we don't have the capacity. I mean, there's, I don't have a legal budget for it, but also police, fire, planning, TPW, to put social consumption and be a part of a pilot that's so unknown, it's kind of parallel to what we're looking at now. Where are the resources best put right now? And we're looking at, you know, the fiscal year '21 budget is very tight and it, you know, while it seems we have new things in, I'll speak to, it's tight, so I don't want to be spending, I'm going to, I want to save our pennies as much as possible.
Okay, so Counselor, did you make a motion? Was that?
I haven't yet, yeah. I just haven't yet. Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank the mayor for her prudence and perspective. I think that, you know, East Hampton's already led a lot in this industry, and I think that I agree with everything she just said, that if we want to move forward, you can be a leader and a pioneer without being first. And I think that we have opportunities to look at the work that's being done by other cities, to kind of glean wisdom from them and some pearls there without getting involved in a lot of legal expenses. I think this is still something that's very viable. I think I'm understanding the mayor correctly when she says that this is something she supports. I think that there's still plenty of time to get this done, and a lot of times, good legislation is a marathon, not a sprint. So now I will make a motion to withdraw the zoning ordinance amendment cannabis equity applicants from the public hearing and send it back to ordinance for, the ordinance subcommittee for continued discussion.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second to remove the cannabis equity application from the public hearing agenda and continue at the subcommittee agenda. Counselor Riss?
Yes, that's my name. Thank you. I just want to say, as a point of clarity, Counselor Zaret, I have to admit something I was mistaken. I thought we already had eight license capable and we don't. So what we're doing is adding two if this became, so that makes me feel better about us, if this takes a while to happen, that we don't give away those licenses that we had set aside for equity. So I'm happy with that. I'm also not concerned if we go to six retail licenses that aren't equity that we currently have. That's okay because at least, well, this proposal could go to nine, or it can stay at eight and we'd have two. One of the things that has to be dealt with is these equity licenses won't happen until the federal government removes restrictions on banks so that these small business owners can get loans because they can't now. And unless you're a huge corporation, you can't capitalize these businesses. So it's okay to wait a little bit so that that can help these applicants. Thank you.
Counselor Kozinski.
Yes, I just wanted to explain my abstentions on the subject throughout this entire process and today. As a real estate agent, in the last year, I've been involved in transactions involving leases and sales, and that's why I'm choosing to abstain from any, nothing in East Hampton, by the way, but just out-of-town, out-of-town transactions of properties related to the business.
So a motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion?
Abstained.
Motion passes. Moving on, Counselor Derby, I would just like to request again in deference to the number of people we have tonight, if we're not voting on the theft ordinance, if we could make our points relatively quickly and move on so that a crowd, some people standing have some belief. Counselor Derby.
Thanks for the preface. So we do have the wage theft ordinance. This, again, is not quite ready to go, as I've been told. It should be ready to go for the next meeting. There's a meeting of lawyers, I believe, tomorrow to kind of hammer out the final details. So this is something that we are looking to continue until our next meeting, and I don't know if anybody has anything to add, but I can make a motion to continue.
They can add after the motion, so.
So I'd like to move to city ordinance amendment, wage theft ordinance, to continue to October 16th at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second.
Okay, motion of second, continue the public hearings on the wage theft ordinance to October 16th. Additional questions or comments on this continuation? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. One more, I guess, bicycles.
We need to have this hearing.
Yes. So we have an ordinance amendment to our bicycle section, and this, basically, the catalyst for this, I guess, was the pedal-and-party bike had come into town, and we started looking at our bicycle ordinances and found some things that needed to be updated. I think everybody has a copy of these updates. A couple of the highlights here are redefinition of bicycle, adding low-speed electric bicycles, motorized scooters, and looking at specific exemptions and restrictions to the trail. And so a couple of those are basically restricting motorized vehicles that, like automobiles, motorcycles, snowmobiles, and then looking at taking vehicles that are over four and a half feet wide or longer than 15 feet and restricting them from the trail, which would explicitly restrict the pedal-and-party bike. So that was a piece that came in there. It also looked at restricting horses, livestock, and draft animals from the bike path. So, you know, basically, we looked at trying to shore up some of the areas that weren't quite clear. And there's also one piece, I just want to make this kind of note for the record. We did put a section in for permitting, and we restricted commerce whose sole function is dependent on the use of the rail trail to be prohibited. That does not prohibit things like the pedal people using the trail as part of their route. And it does not, one of the things that I think could be coming in the future would be potentially bike tours that are going from Northampton to New Haven. Once the rail trail is fully completed, it would not restrict those types of businesses. It would restrict businesses whose sole function is dependent on the bike path and only on the bike path that is in East Hampton. For example, like the pedal-and-party bike, where there, or a pedal taxi. And we also did talk about pedicabs, and we're not against pedicabs, we just haven't gotten to the point where we are ready to legislate them yet because there would need to be legislation for them. And I defer to my other members to chime in if they feel.
No, I just want to mention that in talking about the restrictions, that this does not include mobility aids and other vehicles that the man-hand rail trail uses to keep up the rail trail, wheelchairs, those kind of vehicles, those will be allowed, obviously.
And with the advent of mass bike share, just, it was important to kind of clarify exactly what we're considering, electric bikes and the use thereof, and also just making sure that the trail's accessible to everybody in regards to the size of vehicles on the trail, so. But thanks again for all the work that the committee did together on that. Counselor Riss.
I just want to say, I was going to offer an amendment, but I'd like to talk about it first before we get into the actual formality of an amendment. I have a throttle-assisted electric bike. I pedal it to get exercise, but given that I'm a senior citizen, I tend to stop and use the throttle to continue my ride, and then I start pedaling again. In other words, resting. I'm concerned that I'm going to get fined if someone turns me in because I'm not, I'm an absence of actor, rider, pedaling. I find that language a little concerning. I was going to say, if used solely by throttle for extended duration, but again, that's hard to enforce, as is the other. So I'm not even sure, is it necessary? But I wanted you to know my concern, and I'd love the committee to give me some guidance on this. I do feel that there is a need for something like this. I think an example was given of a rider that rides very quick, very fast, with a high-powered bicycle and never pedals a throttle-assisted bike, which is, might be the reason for this language. But I know there's more than just I that have throttle-assisted bikes that ride and then take a break. So I'm wondering, do I need to worry about this? Should I put this language in? Again, my language is solely by throttle for an extended duration. In other words, somebody sees the person going from, you know, Union Street all the way up to the other end of town without using a pedal and complains about that person. I don't know how you enforce this, but.
Counselor Derby, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I think I can address that. I don't think this is, the intent of this is to penalize people that are taking a break from pedaling because they're tired. I think that the intent of this is to discourage people from using throttle-only vehicles on the bike path. And so, an example, one of the things that we added in here was motorized scooters. You know, I commute by bike on the bike path every single day, and I almost was hit by one recently, a scooter that has no means of pedaling or human propulsion and is purely throttle-only, going around 20 miles an hour. So I think that's the intent, vehicles that are like that, not Counselor Riss riding down the bike path taking a break.
Okay, then I won't work.
They're coming for you.
It's also hard to be, it's going to be hard to enforce. I expect the enforcement will come from people complaining to our, to us and to the police about this, these people doing that kind of thing.
That would be correct.
All right.
Additional questions?
And I won't be offering an amendment. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Then I'll adjourn a motion, counsel. Oh, thank you. If the public would like to address the council on this particular ordinance, no, okay, Counselor Riss. I'm sorry, Counselor Derby, yeah.
Okay, I move to amend Chapter III, Bicycles, Article I, Section 3-1, and Section 3-17 as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion of second to accept amendments to city ordinance in Chapter III, subsections as we just mentioned. Additional questions or comment on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearings are closed. So as I said, we're now going to.
Three to zero.
We're now going to open up public speed time again. The first subcommittee we're going to come to is rules, which will, where that resolution is in committee, so this will be your opportunity. Because, first of all, thank you all for coming, thank you all for participating in your government, this is terrific to see. Because of the number of crowd, we're going to keep it to three minutes. It's very important not to discuss, to have discussions between yourselves, don't have discussions between the podium and the audience. All the comments should be directed to the council. I think those are the playing rules. Oh, is there a sign-in sheet?
Yeah.
People have been signing.
Okay, so a sign sheet. If by chance you haven't signed in, please, so we have a record for the minutes. But that being said, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to, I'll just have the mayor go first because she's our.
Do we give her three minutes?
She gets three minutes.
All right, there you go. We have to be equal here.
Yes, absolutely. So yesterday, in front of the State House, I stood with fellow mayors around the state in support of Senate Bill 1209 and House Bill 3320, which is known as the Roe Act. I want to say a couple of things, but I also want to remind those on the council, but just in the general public, that this act, the Roe Act, is not a new step in legislation for our commonwealth, nor it is something out of the norm. Massachusetts historically leads on defining basic human rights and civil rights while the federal government finds its own way. Here, the Commonwealth, when it passes, and I am urging the passage of the Senate and House bill, is protecting individual reproductive health care rights and processes that have been the law of our land since 1973. My mother fought this fight. It was affirmed in 2016, and that was when I fought the fight for my daughter, who, contrary to the press, is not 16 years old, she's 29. When she was 16, she got to go to the OBGYN all by herself. That was surprising to me. We are, over and over again, fighting a fight around health care access. The access to reproductive health care is essential for our community. These clinics provide basic, unbiased, affordable health care, and this is beyond abortion, cancer screenings, STD prevention and treatment, not to mention access to HIV prevention drugs. Whether you are aware of it or not, these services are not readily available in our health care, every health care clinic, especially in Western Mass, hospitals and doctors' offices. It is because of the stigma that has been around these issues and women's reproductive health care issues since, I would say, the beginning of this country, that has local hospitals, clinics, and doctors not wanting to offer these services because they do not want to deal with the social repercussions, not because they are unnecessary medically to provide. I would just end with the statement I made in Boston. I am very sure that there is no man in this room and in Western Mass that drives over 100 miles to get basic, unbiased, medical information and access to procedures that preserve the rightful dignity around reproductive rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I just make a quick statement? Just a really, really.
It's procedural.
Yes, it's procedural.
Okay.
Just the sheer number of people here, I would, it's everyone's absolute First Amendment right to say whatever you want. I would just encourage you to all think about the people who've spoken before you and whether there's a need to reiterate things, just so that we can keep things moving along in a timely manner.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, again, does your name address? I'm sorry.
I'm Gwen Morrissey, 17 Mayor Street. I'm here tonight because I believe in science and in the intelligence and hearts of women who are tasked with this huge responsibility of just being able to have children. And we are at a stage in our whole society's development where that is not a mandate, where we should welcome the idea that women are self-actualized, whole. where we should welcome the idea that women are self-actualized whole persons regardless of their identity as mothers. Mistakes and bad stuff happens that result in unwanted pregnancies. Mistakes and bad things happen to fetuses even when they are desperately wanted that makes their life prospects so, so hard and so sad and scary. The social safety net has a heck of a lot of holes in it. And women and their gigantic brains and their enormous hearts know themselves best, and they know how best to take care of our society, to participate in society. So the Roe Act, in codifying that belief that women can make the right, hard, loving choices for their own bodies, for their own mental health, and for the benefit of society, should be trusted. You should trust women, you should pass the Roe Act resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Annette Segal, Mother Street, East Hampton. I'm here just to throw my support for the Roe Act resolution. I personally believe that every woman has the right to decide on her own reproductive rights and healthcare, so I'm hoping that the city council will pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kay Collins, for Carolav, East Hampton. When we do the hard work, sometimes very hard work, to create the kind of community that we want to live in, sometimes we have conversations with people that have opposing opinions. And a lot of times, we feel like it's necessary to put a face on an issue in order to foster understanding and empathy. So, if you want to put a face on the issue of abortion, you can use mine. Thirty years ago, I lived in a domestic violence situation in Boston.
Okay, because you just addressed us.
Yeah, in Boston. And in Massachusetts, while abortion was legal, it wasn't really economically accessible. And if the mother of my abuser had not helped me pay for that appointment, I would not have been able to walk away from that situation, and I probably would not be alive right now. And, you know, the thing is, it was my body and it was my choice. And I spent the next decade recovering from that relationship, and I spent probably another good chunk of time trying to be a healthy and happy person. And now, many years later, I have the energy and the health and the happiness to put back into my community, and a lot of that energy goes back into East Hampton, as most of you are familiar. We shouldn't have to put a face and a compelling story to a situation in order to have empathy and understanding. Anybody that has a uterus has the right to make safe and accessible choices about that uterus and has the right to basic healthcare. Massachusetts, you know, we're ahead of the curve, we've been ahead of the curve, I would like us to continue to be ahead of the curve. I find it unfortunate that we need to keep recodifying settled law from the Supreme Court, potentially, you know, potentially because there's going to be challenges. I appreciate the fact that the city council has brought this before us as a resolution, and I really ask you respectfully to pass that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Burnish, 5 Silver Lane, here in town. I've lived in East Hampton for over half my life. We claim to be a welcoming, moral community, but are we? Sure, we've passed the Welcoming Community Trust ordinance back in July, and just a couple of weeks ago, you passed a resolution about the abuse of immigrant children. That measure called, that measure called children, using your words, "they're vulnerable, unable to protect themselves." They said children need to be nurtured, have basic human right to be protected and safeguarded. They deserve our care and protection. That was two weeks ago. What has changed in two weeks? You are considering support of the Roe Act, which would eliminate most constraints to any abortion up until birth in Massachusetts. Killing children is immoral because it is unnatural, it is contrary to human nature. How does this jibe with your resolutions earlier this year? Many of this egocentric society like to create their own truths that makes their arguments easier to defend. It makes life convenient. Two thousand years ago, Pontius Pilate did the convenient thing. He saved his job, he appeased his citizens. But in the end, an innocent man was killed due to moral relativism. In contrast, absolute truth does not change depending on the cultural winds and how they blow. And one absolute truth is this: thou shalt not kill. Abortion is killing an unborn child. If you do not believe this, consider the testimony earlier this year in Congress of a former registered nurse, Jill Stanek, who said it was not uncommon for a live aborted baby to linger for an hour or two. She even recalls one living nearly eight hours. She found another, about 22 weeks old, had been aborted, in the hospital. It was abandoned in the soil utility room of the hospital where he was left to die. She held on to him until he used everything he had to breathe, and he lasted 45 minutes before dying in her arms. How can you sanction this legislation, which will allow late-term abortions, knowing that babies older than this story will be killed? Is this a welcoming community? And is this what a welcoming community morally believes? Does this legislation, or why does this legislation change in the law the word, the words "unborn child" and change it to "fetus"? Truth is often inconvenient. So what you are considering tonight is abhorrent to human life. I'm almost done there.
Okay.
And basically, it comes down to a crime against humanity. You and I will both have to answer to a higher authority. The most innocent and helpless of lives, the one that needs us the most, we abort? Is this a moral, compassionate, welcoming city? It is estimated that since Roe versus Wade, 60 million babies have been aborted. One abortion is murder, 60 million?
I think the time's...
Genocide?
One last sentence? One last sentence.
If you want to profess a moral compass...
This is not equitable accountability.
Excuse me, I, no, I'm in charge. Will I have one last sentence? Please hurry.
If you want to profess a moral compass, then please have one, and I pray that you do not support this legislation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any patience.
Okay. Next, please.
I live at 211 Park Street, and I'm 18 weeks pregnant. If you've ever been pregnant, you know that being pregnant is hard enough under the best circumstances. I have a steady income, a home, family and friends nearby who support me, access to healthcare and health insurance, a car, all of these things. So I can only imagine what it would be like to be pregnant with any fewer than these resources, and then on top of that, to not want to be pregnant, or to want to be pregnant but need to terminate the pregnancy for medical reasons. Whether to continue a pregnancy, I believe, should be the pregnant person's choice, and we should not make that choice any harder than it already is. So I urge you to support the Roe resolution for East Hampton.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jess Thayer, and I'm at 116 Pleasant Street, East Hampton. I thank the council for speaking, or for listening to all our, all we have to say tonight. I, at a very young age, was a victim of sexual assault, and thankfully, I didn't become pregnant. But it was hard enough even just going into that hospital room to receive care, and having everyone look at me like I made a wrong decision, and then telling me I have to wait to make a decision. I think approving this legislation, or codifying this, if we approve it in Massachusetts, would just ensure that I have basic access to care, regardless of whether your moral obligation, I have my own obligation to take care of my own body, and it's my body and my choice. I have a brain injury, and if I were to ever become pregnant, whether it was in a consensual encounter or not, I know that it would threaten my life significantly. I've had this discussion with many doctors, and I take many precautions. But that decision is between me and my doctor. Even if I decided that I would have the pregnancy full term, I'd come at such an increased risk for suicidal mental health. This goes beyond just carrying a baby to term and giving it up for adoption. I'm a child of adoption, and I have this discussion very much with my brother, who's a Catholic priest. I don't even share the same views of him. But to think that these people are coming to these decisions lightly, or that we're just discarding life as if it isn't sacred, is just beyond, I can't even come up with the word for that. But mostly, what I want to say is, we know that this is changing across the country, and we're not asking you to change the rest of the country here. We're not asking you to not listen to the other side. We're asking you just to remind you that we're asking for basic protection. The smallest voices aren't always democratic. This is a basic human right to healthcare. It's my body and my choice. Thank you.
I'm Amber Black. I live at 493 East Street, and I support the passage of this resolution. I support the passage of the Roe Act, for all the reasons that people before me and I'm sure after me will say. But what I want to point out is that I think it's really important, and I really want to live in a city where our community leaders will make our values public, stand behind them, even when they're controversial. I think that it's important at certain times with certain issues, many issues, to be explicit about our values, especially when they're under threat. And I'm really happy that you have brought this forward, and I encourage you to pass it and demonstrate what our values are in East Hampton. They may not be shared by everybody, but I hope that this is a community that overall sees the value of these rights and access to our own choices about our healthcare, and I hope that you will make those values public by passing this resolution.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sophie Chambers. I live at 116 Pleasant Street. My statement also echoes much of what's been said at the time, but if I had the thought of having to go in front of a judge to explain my decision, I can't imagine the additional stress and upset that that would have caused me. I certainly, at the time, was not prepared emotionally or logistically to become a mother, and so having to make that heart-wrenching decision and having to go in front of a judge and explain my personal life publicly, I just, I imagine that would have been even more stressful than the situation would have been. So I also thank you for listening to all of us and urge you to pass this. Thank you.
Baxter Chandler, I live at 209 Main Street. I also appreciate this being, this resolution being brought to the council. Reproductive rights are human rights. Women must have access and control of their own reproductive rights and their own, being able to access good, quality reproductive healthcare. I want to live in a community that supports women. I want to be in a community that supports women's right to have control over their bodies, to have control over their reproductive health. At the end of the day, reproductive health is about human dignity, self-determination, and equality, and I really urge you all to vote to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Fellow members of the council, my name is Lindsay Rothschild, and this is my wife, Dreah Marks, and we live at 2 South Hampshire Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Anytime we receive an end-of-life diagnosis, it is a tragedy, and what ensues is a trauma for the person and their family. End-of-life diagnoses can come anytime, including before we are even born. We received two in our family last year, each of us losing a parent to pancreatic cancer. We made difficult decisions with them and for them under the guidance of our doctors. In 2010, we also received two terminal diagnoses. This began in my 20-week ultrasound. We learned that both of our twins had severe complications. We had just purchased a new home here in East Hampton, picked out their room, and were anticipating their arrival. What followed was devastating. We had to have an emergency amniocentesis. If the amniocentesis didn't give us the information we needed to make informed decisions, we would then need a prenatal MRI, thus the weeks marching on. So much information was coming at us, it was difficult to comprehend. We heard the geneticist say to us that if we got to a certain date and we needed to end the pregnancy, we would need to go to New York or another state. The thought amidst this trauma of going to another state to other doctors layered more trauma, and for some, it would cause economic hardship, if not a complete obstacle. The 24 weeks is an arbitrary time period. Families facing devastating diagnoses needed, need to be able with their doctor's guidance to decide what is most compassionate for their family. These are end-of-life decisions. Just as we made decisions with our parents about their end of life, life with compassion and with dignity, so do we make decisions about our daughters, Flora and Bee, both of whom had fatal diagnoses. Through the Empty Arms Support Group, Terminating for Medical Reasons Support Group, we have met many other families who have had to walk our same path. Just like cancer, these prenatal diagnoses do not discriminate, affecting all types of people of all backgrounds and religions. It is these families, in these families' honors, that I speak today, and for all families that find themselves as we did. Why is a municipal resolution important? Because we, as a community, need to say to Dan Carey, our state rep, who's a co-signer of this bill, "we are with you, thank you." We need to say to the state that this is important. We need to let families in our community facing these same tragic diagnoses, that we see them and stand by them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm here to speak in favor of this resolution. I also would like to say that I am pro-abortion. I think it's time to take the stigma away from the term abortion. It's a procedure, it's a medical procedure. Be in favor of allowing women to have abortions. I graduated from high school in Massachusetts in 1969, when abortion was illegal. And in case you're unaware of this fact, women still had abortions in Massachusetts at that time. Some were legal, especially if you had money, some were not. And there are many tragic stories about what women went through at that time, and it's very emotional for women to even talk about this. In 1970, things got easier because you could get illegal abortion in New York, as long as you could get yourself there. And then finally, Roe v. Wade was passed, we all breathed a sigh of relief. At the time, I didn't appreciate the limitations that the Massachusetts law placed on abortion access, and I'm sorry to say, I didn't grasp the ramifications of the age restriction that was put in place in the 80s. So here we are in 2019, with even the flawed Massachusetts law at risk because of recent appointments to the Supreme Court. Massachusetts has a history of being the first to act, and we need to do it again. The Roe Act will do two things. It will protect the women of Massachusetts from any changes in law at the federal level, and it will reform our abortion laws so that anyone, regardless of age, income, or insurance, will have access to safe, legal abortions. Other people are highlighting the specific improvements to the Massachusetts law, and I won't repeat them, but I would like to say that no woman should have to live in a society where she is at the mercy of others to make decisions about her body, her life, and her future. And I ask the city councils of East Hampton to vote in favor of this resolution. And once again, thank you very much for bringing it up and allowing us to talk to you about it. Thank you. Did I say my name?
Yes.
Hi. I'm Laura Douglas. I'm at 18 Clifford Street, here in East Hampton. Most of my comments have already been spoken to by other people, that have been echoed there, so I'll try to keep this short. I'm here also in support of this, because I see East Hampton as someplace that cares for the safety and security of the people that live here. And when we talk about safety, we're not just talking about crime statistics. Safety is autonomy. Safety is the ability to make decisions that affect your life and affect your future. And this Roe Act is something that does help women do that. The city of East Hampton has always stood behind its people, and this is one other way that we can. As a registered nurse, I do hear stories of sexual assault, from sexual assault nurse examiner friends that I have. These are things that happen all the time, they happen here in East Hampton as well. You know, we need to support women, give them options to make decisions that plan for their future. Labor and delivery nurses will tell you about fetal abnormalities and people who are forced to go through births. So if you can imagine growing this baby until you have to actually have an induced labor... So if you can imagine growing this baby until you have to actually have an induced labor, and that's the only choice you have after a certain number of weeks, you know, that's, I see that as criminal. You know, we got the right in 1973, the Supreme Court said we had the right to abortion, and it's been chipped away for years and years. You know, one of those ways is this 24-hour wait period. As a nurse, I can't think of any other procedure that requires a 24-hour wait period. We decide every day, in the hospital that I work at, to put, place people on comfort measures, to make decisions that will end their life, stop giving them treatment, for the mercy of that person. We also, healthcare is about choices. You know, we have a lot of treatments that we can give that some people do not want for religious reasons. I give the example of taking blood. You know, there are some religions who will not take blood products. And in healthcare, we say that's people's rights. Well, healthcare is a right, abortion is a right. The Supreme Court said so. So I'm glad that this resolution has been brought forward, and I'm glad the city of East Hampton hopefully is, will speak that voice. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diane Jensen Olshewski. I don't live in East Hampton. I live in Deerfield. I drove here tonight because I feel very strongly about this resolution, and I'm glad to see that it's been brought forth here. I think, I'm incredulous that it's the year 2019, and we are still talking about women having access to healthcare, and abortion is healthcare, and being able to access it. And I've watched the impingement on that right for the last 30 years. And I just, I really appreciated what the mayor said about access to healthcare. We should be expanding access to good healthcare for every citizen, and we should be appreciating that women can make their own medical decisions within the privacy of the room with their doctor, and that they know indeed what is best for them. So I thank you for your time.
Oh, sorry.
Are you ready for me, Dan?
Yeah, I was writing something.
All right, yeah. Good evening, city councilors. Nancy Stenberg, 17D, Main Avenue. I wrote to all of you who are at large, and my own, Omar. But I'm here to follow that up, to just recommit my affirmation of this resolution, because it is a revolution that demonstrates East Hampton's commitment to reproductive freedom and the right to safe and legal abortion. And, you know, I moved here because I am so proud to live in this community where we're always looking to treat everybody with dignity and respect. And as usual, I have a different take on the resolution. I wanted you all to know that I got a sneak peek, a look at it, even before you did. And I did use parts of it to make the resolution that passed on the floor of the Democratic State Convention. So I wanted you all to know that. And what are we doing here? We're simply strengthening what is already in place. And, yeah, we have to do that in 2019, because there are just forces that want to make life more difficult for women and other marginalized people in America. And we have to be sensitive to that, and we have to work to do that, all of us. So I thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura. I live at 35 Bridgewater Terrace in East Hampton. I just want to thank Councilor Coniff for bringing this forward. I want to thank the mayor for speaking in support of it. I was at last night's subcommittee hearing, and I heard some misinformation, so I just wanted to state some facts about the Roe Act and about abortion law in Massachusetts. The Roe Act, if passed, would codify the right to abortion into state law. You know, if Roe gets overturned, that's helpful. Improve access for young people by ending the judicial bypass system, which disproportionately impacts low-income teens, teens of color, and teens in the foster care system. It allows for abortion after 24 weeks in cases of lethal fetal anomalies, ensuring medical decisions remain between a patient and their doctor. It updates inflammatory and medically inaccurate definitions of abortion and pregnancy. And it removes mandatory 24-hour waiting period for abortion care. And establishes safety net coverage for abortion care for the uninsured and the underinsured. Additionally, currently, Mass Health covers abortion fully. The Roe Act makes no changes to this. Abortion is already allowed after 24 weeks in Massachusetts if pregnancy imposes a substantial risk of grave impairment to a person's physical or mental well-being. The Roe Act expands that section to include cases of lethal fetal anomalies, which are crucial, as we heard. Currently in Massachusetts, no form of pregnancy care or reproductive care requires parental consent. Abortion is the only form of reproductive healthcare that requires parental consent, and we are one of 17 states that requires this. A 2019 study published in the Journal of Obstetrics and Gynecology states that the judicial bypass process needed when parental consent cannot be obtained introduces an additional delay in care of six days. So that's the difference between a medication abortion, which is just two pills, and a surgical abortion. The differences financially are huge. With all those facts stated, I'd just like to point out an absurdity here. The Roe v. Wade ruling was about a person's right to privacy, and yet, I'm here, standing in front of you, asking you all to support my right to privacy to decide what I do with my uterus. I've never had to do that before for any other medical procedure, so I'm just stating that. I'd also like to say that this is where we are right now. We have a president who has instated a domestic gag rule, stripping clinics of Title X Family Planning Funds, if they even mention abortion as an option. A vice president who has stated on the House floor, "I long for the day that Roe v. Wade is sent to the ash heap of history." States lining up to challenge Roe v. Wade, and a Supreme Court ready to overturn it. So I'm standing here, asking my community to stand behind healthcare access, so our state legislators know we support the Roe Act. So at least in Massachusetts, we have safe, legal abortion, once Roe falls. This is incredibly important for our community, and please support this resolution.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Coleman. I live on East Street, East Hampton. I oppose this Roe Act, as a Catholic man, as a man, as a husband, as a father, as a I'm really glad my mom didn't abort me, because I'm here, and I will always fight for the unborn child until I die. I am that voice. This is playing out murder of our children. And I urge, and I plead, that you don't send this anywhere. Abortion is always, is already legal. Why we have to go to nine months? Some babies are born at eight months. I was born premature. It's like, this is bad. Where's our morals? We losing them in this country. And I urge you, don't put the East Hampton stamp on it. I love this city, but I would not stand by, in my house, and let this go through until my voice be heard. My voice, you know, I'm glad I'm here today, because I will keep fighting, whether, and I pray today that Roe v. Wade be overturned. Mike Pence prays you. And I urge you not to sign this thing, if we have any decency.
Good evening, councilmen. I would just like to say, I'm not a nurse.
You can just say your name and address.
Norrie Coleman, 52 East Street, the wife of Joe Coleman. I'm not a nurse, I'm not a mayor, I'm not any educated, degree-earning woman, but I'm a mother of eight children. That's probably disgusting to some of you here. But, motherhood to me is the greatest gift that anybody could have. I have suffered through some of my pregnancies, I've had five C-sections. My uterus doesn't belong to me, it belongs to my children. It was their home, their resting place, their safe haven, even to my son, who has an anomaly of Down Syndrome, an extra chromosome. We're reducing children and women to body parts here. My uterus, my body, my choice? Well, you know what? I'm a woman too, with a uterus. And I say that my body is not for myself, it's for the world, it's to give. Even if the child has a defect, that is an opportunity for a community to show love. If a child has a disease, that it's going to die before it's born, let it, I mean, let it die naturally. That is a blessing to the community, to show that we love even somebody that's not as capable or as healthy as we are. We are becoming a society of survival of the fittest. This is what the Nazis believed. The Nazis believed that the disabled had no place into society, that the people that weren't as fortunate had no place in society. Okay? No, that's not what motherhood is about, or a uterus is about, or a baby with Down Syndrome. This is, October is also Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Nine out of 10 children, the doctors are coercing. It may not be forced abortion on women, but let me tell you, having eight children, it was, oh my God, she's crazy. Oh my God, she's popping them out like gumballs. I'm the minority. I'm the minority, not just as a black woman who's targeted by Planned Parenthood, but as a mother of eight. The family is under attack, and we can't even see it. That is going to be the last battle between Satan and Christ. It's over the family, and we are in it. God said, "I formed you, I knew you before I formed you in the womb." He knows all of us, because not only do we have a body, but we also have a soul. Thank you, and I urge you not to, not to send this bill forward.
Thank you so much for allowing the time for all of us to speak tonight. My name is Jennifer McKenna. I'm here as a mother, as a volunteer on the Advisory Board of the Abortion Rights Fund of Western Massachusetts, and as Director of the Alliance, which is a network of women's law centers in five states, working in nine states around the country, nine other states around the country. I heartfelt thanks to the council for your leadership in bringing forward this resolution in support of abortion rights and reproductive justice. Thanks to the mayor, who joined with mayors of 16 other mass cities and towns yesterday to informally endorse the Roe Act. By passing this resolution, East Hampton will join a rising groundswell of support for the Roe Act across the state, telling our state policymakers that it's past time to eliminate the medically unnecessary and discriminatory obstacles to abortion care that remain on our books. At this moment, in our state and in our country, your local action to support women's health, rights, reproductive justice, and abortion access explicitly is critical and powerful. First, your public and official statement of local support for proactive abortion policymaking at the state level is important for our state reps and senators sponsoring and supporting the Roe Act. The opposition has targeted them with, in some cases, ugly personal accusations and blatant misrepresentations of what the law would do. This resolution is a show of support for what our pro-choice state reps are doing, and a refutation of hateful and disingenuous opposition tactics. Second, it's an official assertion of our local community's stake in state policymaking about abortion. State policymaking plays out on the ground and has a direct impact on individual people's lives, families' economic security, and the health of local communities themselves. By passing this resolution, you're giving official voice to the majority in our communities who respect women's right to make our own decisions about our bodies, our lives, and our futures, whether it's that saying no to an unintentional pregnancy, or yes to becoming a parent. Third, this resolution helps chip away at abortion stigma, which is so deep and pervasive in this country, by saying abortion out loud and creating a public space for community members to talk about their abortions and expose misinformation, myths, and assumptions. Finally, your resolution is a vehicle for educating community members about the significant abortion restrictions that bear, you're still on the books in Massachusetts, that disproportionately impact people with low incomes, in communities of color, and at-risk youth. Many mass residents assume our state's a leader in pro-choice policymaking. Even OB-GYNs and women, other women's healthcare providers I've talked to in the region had no idea that the abortion obstacles still on the books are there, until they learned about the Roe Act. From my vantage point, working in other states, and I can attest that our state is not in the vanguard, but that the Roe Act will be a critical step in getting us there. Every day, people in East Hampton and across the state face the deep, personal decision of whether to continue a pregnancy, whether resulting from failed contraception, lack of access to contraception, or coverage for birth control, lack of comprehensive sexuality education at school, the faulty belief that one can't get pregnant during perimenopause or while nursing a baby, from stranger rape, date rape, incest, reproductive coercion by a violent partner, or the tragedy of a fatal fetal diagnosis. Whether or when to become a parent is one of the most important decisions we can make. Thank you for supporting the Roe Act, for taking local action to help ensure that your constituents in East Hampton and all of us in Massachusetts can make decisions that are best for our lives, so our communities are places where each of us can participate with dignity and equality. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tamara Smith. I live at 103 Strong Street. I wanted to start out by thanking Councilor Coniff for bringing a difficult issue to the table. Having been on the other side of that table, I know the amount of inner strength it takes you to be the only woman who is a voting member at this table, and how much back-emotion work you have had to maintain, and how much harassment you have undergone for simply saying that we deserve to take this up. I'd also like to state that I'm a mother of five children, and I believe in this act with all of my being. I do not believe the number of children that you have makes you either more or less eligible as a woman to determine whether or not this act should stand. I'll tell you another thing. Of those five children, all five of them are now of childbearing age. That terrifies me as their mother. It terrifies me that if, if this is illegal, that they will take things into their own hands. And for those of you who grew up when I did, our visions of abortion was more of...
Tim.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Our vision of abortion was more of the back alley coat hanger. And I also ask you to think about how technology has also moved on. And the reality is that my child, if she needs to access an abortion, or for all of my sons, if they need to accompany a woman to get an abortion, it's a very different procedure than what we had growing up. And I want to make sure that they are not buying pills off the internet in a black market that could kill them, because they're too scared to come to us, and they don't have any legal options. This is why I support the Roe Act, and I thank Peg Coniff from the bottom of my heart for having the bravery to bring this up, particularly with such a gendered council. Thank you.
Jay Andrezic, 64 Division Street. Fatal fetal anomalies after 24 weeks is a problem. And it's probably something that should be discussed. But if anyone tells you that that is all this act does for abortions after 24 weeks, they're being disingenuous. It is a radical expansion of people's abilities to get abortions after 24 weeks. Last night, at the committee meeting, we were informed that insurance fraud is currently occurring, and that mass health funds are being used for abortions for people who don't qualify for that. And the solution to that that was offered at last night's committee meeting was codify that fraud and pass the Roe Act. I was beyond dumbfounded when I heard that. Two years ago, the East Hampton Board of Health decided that 20-year-olds are not wise enough to go buy a pack of smokes.
Hey, you can look this way, too.
Oh, sorry. A 17-year-old couldn't vote for any of you, because they're not developed enough to make that kind of a decision. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, if you're 16 years old and you're riding a bicycle without a helmet, it's against the law. it's against the law. But if this passes, a 15-year-old can say, "Forget you, Mom and Dad. Forget you, court system. I'm going to go talk to somebody. I'm 33 weeks pregnant, and I'm 15, and I'm scared, and I know this is going to have a big impact on my life, and it's going to make me sad that I'm not going to be able to hang out with my friends anymore." And the only person that that person has to counsel with is the abortion doctor. That's wrong. It's immoral. And I, for one, would not vote for anyone who would vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shanique Spalding. I'm a resident of the city of Springfield, but I am also, for many of the folks in this room, and some of you on the council may know that I am the Western and Central Mass organizer for Planned Parenthood Advocacy Fund. Not only am I that, but I've been a longtime activist who know many of the folks in this room from other ways that I've been an activist in Western Mass. I'm also an immigrant to this country. I've come from Kingston, Jamaica. And I am proud to be doing this work and proud to say that I do support abortion access. I think there are a lot of individuals who have misinformation about what is in the statewide legislation around the Roe Act. But I know that this council have done proper research and have written a strong resolution in support of the Roe Act with the words that were put into the Roe Act. So I want to thank you for doing that and to bringing this before the community. As folks have mentioned before, there are several other communities in this area and in this county who have passed similar resolutions, letting legislators know about the importance of this Roe Act and why it is important to codify, continue to support abortion access in Massachusetts, and expand that to take care of those who are uninsured, underinsured, or don't have access as it is. It is important to know that even in a state where we have amazing laws, and laws even around abortion that are better than most states, that we still have ways that we can be better and do better to support individuals who need that care. Abortion is health care. It does not matter how we feel in morality around abortion. It is health care. And it is important to know that individuals before my time and individuals in this room who have shared stories about what that time was like before abortion was considered health care, about the horrors of which individuals had to go through in order to receive that care. I know that this stigma that is around abortion drives individuals to do things that does not support the decisions that they want to make internally. I am also a Catholic, and so I do resonate with individuals who come here and talk about their morality and their beliefs. But as a Catholic, I also believe that it's not my position to judge individuals, but to love everyone, regardless of whether or not they make decisions different from my own. I don't think that it is my godly principles to judge other individuals. And I also don't judge people who have opinions different from my own. I respect those. And I ask the folks of morality who might be sitting here wondering, "How do I make a moral decision?" I say, "Love everyone and support them in being good humans." And if that's what the decision that they make, support them regardless. I'd like to share a story about my work. And for individuals who may have questions about this Roe Act or what's in it, I appreciate you having a chat with myself. I do have copies of the actual piece of legislation, and also about some of the things that folks might have brought up. I urge you to support the Roe resolution. I thank you for bringing it forth, this community. And remember that there are lots of individuals who have spoken in favor and have shared their stories about why it's important to them. And I ask that you consider their thoughts and their feelings as well. Thank you.
Hello. Julie Smith, Hendrick Street, East Hampton. I stand in support of the Roe resolution, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak on this issue regarding equal access to public health. I wasn't going to speak because many of the individuals who spoke before me made key points. But then I heard some inflammatory language of a prior speaker, and I had to get up. Our city has made great strides in the last 22 years that I've lived here. It's been an enormous change in this town, and it's become a city as well. We are proud of this city, its values, and the collective vision of its future. Anyone trying to bring us backward to a dark time in the history of public health in America is woefully mistaken about this great city and the intelligence of its people. Passing this off as anything, or passing off the resistance to this resolution as anything other than a means to prevent half our population from having control over their own bodies is a blatant attempt to blur the constitutional separation of church and state, and it must not stand. I ask you to please pass the Roe resolution, and I thank you for bringing it forward, and I thank you for your consideration this evening. Thank you.
Paige Delinsky, 442 East Street. I am pro-life because I want to support those who are already fully existing in our world, actively working to make their own decisions about their livelihood. We are given one body in this life, and every one deserves to make all decisions related to their body. I am advocating for us all to have autonomy over our own body, which is what the Roe resolution supports. My body does not solely exist to harbor a newborn child. My body is there to help me pursue my own life and future, whatever I imagine that to be. And if I do not desire to have a child at a point in time, and sperm inside my body has caused a chemical reaction to occur, I alone should have the decision as to what my body should do with that chemical reaction. As it becomes less clear how much choice I will have in this day and age over what I can and cannot do with my body, I strongly urge the East Hampton City Council to vote in favor of this resolution. My body is my home, and I want to feel safe in doing what I feel is best for my home. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. My name is Tim Biggins, and I live in East Long Meadow, Mass. And since you welcomed comments from someone in D. Field, I thought I'd be comfortable to come up and speak with you about this. What's not known about this bill is that it expands, it takes away the current law that's in place. There's a law in Massachusetts which protects the right for a woman to seek abortion. I personally am opposed to that. I think there's other solutions to the problem, but that's already protected. What it does is it goes very, very far to remove any protections, particularly against child sexual predators. There's no reporting, there's no checking on an older man who comes in with a younger girl and pretends to be her father or some other relative when he's actually her sexual assailant. And it will, in fact, a lot of people, lawyers are looking at this now, calling this a sexual predator protection bill. And I think it's a very serious concern as public officials, under mandatory reporting guidelines, to be very careful to steer away from such a dangerous rule. This is being rushed through quickly by Planned Parenthood and allies in the state. And they're moving in these town committee meetings to get these resolutions passed so they can go back to the regulators, who were originally very in favor of this bill, but have stepped back with caution as they've looked at these legal ramifications. So I would be cautious not to be hasty about this in any way, shape, or form. It also expands taxpayer funding of abortion. There's already contests under that by people on both sides of this issue. If a woman seeks health care, if I want to get a vasectomy, should other people be forced to pay for that? In this age of public funding of health care, the lines are getting a little bit gray, but it is a serious consideration to be made regarding this bill. It also expands, as someone mentioned earlier, late-term abortions. I think we can all agree that's fairly hideous. But once you agree that the baby, just a day before its birth, is really still truly a baby, then it's only a matter of logic to look back. And I think, you know, there's a lot of confusion over a woman's right over her body. But the DNA of the child is not the DNA of the mother. And under the miracle of birth, as it was invented by God, that DNA is protected from attack from a mother's own body and is allowed to come determined to be born. It's just, we haven't even figured that mechanism out yet. But it's protected. Otherwise, the white blood cells in the mother's body would destroy it. And so it's not her body. Unfortunately, she became--
No, no, come on.
Unfortunately, she became pregnant, and I understand the hardship associated with that. My heart goes out to people find themselves pregnant, women find themselves pregnant. But in the words of my friend Leanne, who was herself raped and had an abortion, sought recourse to abortion, and later regretted it. She said, "I realized two things. One, my assailant was kinder to me than I was to my own child. He left me alive, and I didn't let my own child live. Two," she said, "I held my baby guilty for the crimes of his father." And she now, with three other biologically born children, regrets that choice. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate your deference and consideration. Thank you very much.
Again, you've been great. I know it is an emotional issue, so but please, people are here to speak their truth, and respect that quietly, please. Thank you.
My name is Chavis Sandage. I live at 116 Pleasant Street. And this is my second time tonight to have to speak about hard things, so I wrote it down to help me. Abortion is not a problem. It's the result of a problem. And I'm going to say that again. Abortion is not a problem. It's the result of a problem, and in fact, a series of problems throughout our culture. To the anti-choice folks here tonight on the council, attending as citizens, I want to speak personally and challenge you. I want to ask you, to invite you. Why not devote your time and energy to the real problems that create the need for abortion? Why not fight the evil that is rape and incest? Why not support everyone's access to reproductive health care and birth control? Why not support all families' access to affordable childcare? Why not support equal pay for equal work? Are we motivated by a need to control women's bodies? Or do we long to make a difference by fighting the real problems affecting women and girls in our community and in our country? If women in America lose the right to control our own bodies, we lose the right to control our lives. And it's not too late to join us, each of you on the right side of history. You can help make our community and our country a safe place for women and girls to live and to thrive. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Melissa Drysdale. I live at 6 Apple Tree Lane in East Hampton. I have never really paid attention to East Hampton politics, but I have to say, y'all have my attention now. And you will have it going forward. And I'm definitely going to be paying attention to this issue and paying much more careful attention to the work that you do, especially with elections coming up. I'm very interested in how this is all going to go. I really urge you to consider the facts of this bill and what it will do. And I hear some of my peers spouting some very concerning rhetoric that I just find is not accurate. I want to make sure that we are not going to fall victim to fear mongering with regards to the facts of this. I think it's highly unlikely that a sexual predator is going to bring in a girl pretending that it's his daughter to get an abortion. I think it is much more likely that people need care, and they need access to that care. That is what we're talking about. I am a mother. I loved being pregnant. I have a four-year-old daughter. I'm a teacher. I teach elementary school. And I care deeply about children and about our future. I can also tell you that I am a Christian, and I care deeply about God and about life. And I urge you to support this act because it is about safety and is about health care. And just because I believe one thing does not mean I get to decide what another woman does about her own body. It is not my choice to decide. There is separation of church and state for a reason, and we must preserve that. So I thank you for considering the Roe Act, and I, please, please, I hope that you vote to support it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Burnett. I live on Templain Street, East Hampton. And as you can tell by my garb, I'm clergy in Eastern Orthodox Church. I've heard several people make comments here that this is not a moral issue. My heart goes out to the women that are victims of sexual abuse or that have had children that they have had to abort because of birth defects. But the reality is, this is a moral problem. This is about morality. Jesus Christ said, "If you love me, you will keep my commandments." Being a student of early church history, going back to the first century, the writings of Nodicki, the writings of Polycarp, the writings of Athanasius, and all the early church fathers, every one of them expressly forbid abortion. Now, abortion isn't something new. This goes back to the beginning of time. But I don't judge anyone, but I look at the standard that is put before us as those that profess to be Christians. And if we support this, then how can we say to Christ, "I love you," that I call myself a Christian, when we knowingly, deliberately choose to disobey what he has required of us? This is a moral issue. Thank you.
My name is Alice Charland. I live on Emerald Place in East Hampton. We know that a child in utero has permanent fingerprints, which are completely unique and identify it as a separate individual person, unlike any other. And those fingerprints are set in stone by the time a fetus reaches 17 weeks. We also know this unique individual person doesn't share blood with its mother. Their blood type is often not even the same. Clearly, every human fetus is an identifiable, unique person, and while it's nurtured by its mother, is not a part of its mother's body. In January 2015, an extensively researched document on the science of fetal pain was published by the Family Research Council, the FRC. The editorial experts include Associate Professor in the field of anesthesia and pain management at Harvard Medical School and the residency program director at the Department of Anesthesiology, perioperative, and pain medicine at Brigham and Women's Hospital in Boston. The report cites more than 30 scientific studies, testimonies, medical evidence, and real-life experiences in its exposition of the science of fetal pain as the weeks advance post-fertilization. The current law federally cited-- sorry. The current federal law cited by Planned Parenthood reflects science from 1973. But with advances in modern science and ongoing research, it is becoming more apparent that the unborn child can feel pain by 20 weeks, that is, five months or even earlier in the pregnancy. Following is one example of the clear evidence provided by the 2003 Medical Textbook on Maternal-Fetal and Neonatal Physiology. And I quote, "Pain receptors appear around the mouth four to five weeks post-fertilization, followed by the development of nerve fibers which carries stimuli to the brain. Around six weeks post-fertilization, the unborn child first responds to touch." Six weeks. By 18 weeks post-fertilization-- By eighteen weeks post-fertilization, pain receptors have appeared throughout the body. I urge each one of you to act compassionately, and on behalf of our most vulnerable persons, vote against or bring forward the Roe Act as being representative of the wishes of the city of East Hampton, because it doesn't represent mine either, but thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jesse Morrissey, I live at 6 Apple Tree Lane, and I have uterus. I'm transgender. Pretty much everything that I wanna say in support of this act has already been said by other people, but I just wanna reiterate the point that being pro-choice doesn't necessarily mean that you're pro-abortion, it just means that you respect every person who has a uterus, respect their dignity, their ability to have agency over their own bodies. I urge you to support this act. Thank you.
Is that everyone?
Is one more?
Oh geez.
What was that?
Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Furman, I live at 92 Oliver Street, and I urge you all to not support the Roe Act. I believe that it is a horrific violence against babies' rights. Thank you.
Evening councilors, my name is Frank Furman, I live at 92 Oliver Street. Most of everything I had to say tonight's already been spoken of, but I heard a lot of safety for the children, welcoming to East Hampton to the children, being a safe environment. I also heard about abortion rights. But abortion rights also means death to the fetus. We have to be respectful for human life, we have to be respectful for the fetus, allow them to mature, and live a natural life. Please do not move forward on this bill. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Hibbert, and I live in East Hampton. I would just like to say that I am a Catholic in good standing. A lot of people proclaim they're Catholic, but they're not in good standing. So I wanted to make that clear, there's a big difference. But what I wanna talk to you about is, I've been in the pro-life movement for twenty years. And the reason, what brought me to the pro-life movement was a healing that I had. I had an abortion, and I had, after I had it, I had a lot of guilt, felt suicidal, and I wished I'd never had it, and I knew it was wrong after. And I ended up changing face, and I ended up confessing that, and I felt a huge relief in the confessional, I felt Christ was with me, holding my hand and saying, "Thank you for realizing what your sin was." And I've learned through that, that a lot of women who have abortions, they defend it because they've had one and they can't face that confession, they can't bring themselves to that point where they can really admit that.
I would reject your conversation more towards the bill versus your opinion of other people's, you know, I mean, why you would think this would not be good, please.
Well, I just really feel this is not a good thing because of the experience I've had and the suffering I've had from that. And I was convinced by people saying, "Oh, it's your body, your choice," things like that. It wasn't really, that was about a baby in my womb that I allowed to be killed by Planned Parenthood and a very vicious, money-grabbing organization, that that's what they're all about. And they use women to promote that. So I'd just like to say, I'm not in favor of this, and I don't understand why East Hampton is even getting involved in this, but I just pray that all of you consider, there is a God, and he does judge us by our moral values. There is a commandment that says, "Thou shalt not kill." Y'all should think about that, and I pray that everybody in the storm does have a healing that have had an abortion from that and realize what they did, because without that, it's really hard to live. Thank you.
Colleen Smith, 44 Ferry Street. I was really hoping I didn't have to get up today. I'm genuinely horrified by the fact that in this day and age, I still have to get up and defend my medical rights. This shouldn't be that much of an issue in this day and age. And every person who's had an abortion has an individual experience with that abortion. It's not homogeneic, which is part of what this bill is addressing. It's not a universal thing, everybody's experiences are individual, but us having access to care that individualizes that for us as we need it is incredibly crucial to having a healthy, thriving community. There's a lot of misinformation that seems to be going on about this, but thank you for taking steps to ensure that we have the support of this. I hope that you vote in support of us having just basic health care. Honestly, a lot of these other issues would go away if we had better education around the entire matter, which we can't have without small steps like this. So I urge you to continue your support of the act.
Okay, I think has everyone either spoken what wants to, or at least heard someone who made their point. Okay, so we're gonna close this public speak time and then move on to the committee. So Counselor Pique, I believe this is your committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I suppose that we should get right to the matter at hand and not talk about committee realignments. So I think the most appropriate thing would be for me to turn things over to Counselor Coniff, the counselor that introduced this measure.
Just say that we approved it three to zero last night.
Oh, yeah, we met last night, we approved the three to zero.
I'm not sure I'm gonna get through this, so I apologize. Maybe not. I am a Catholic. I went to a Catholic grade school. I went to a Catholic college. I am not a Catholic in good standing. I love my religion. My religion did not love me because I'm gay. It rejected me. So you'll excuse me if I don't make decisions based on religion. I had more to say, but I'm not gonna be able to say it. I leave you with a quote from Kate in Massachusetts, who had an abortion after twenty-four weeks because of a fatal fetal anomaly. And she said, "I resent very much when politicians try to force me to carry a very sick baby to term and watch her die a slow and tortured death just because it fits their and not my religious sensibilities." I urge my fellow city councilors to join me in support of this resolution, and I've sent a bill twelve oh nine. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, I think.
If you'd like one of us, do you want us to read it?
Do you want me to read it?
Please.
Do you have a copy?
Yeah.
I have a copy here.
Thank you, Counselor Coniff. Okay, I guess I'll make the motion, I'll read it down. "A resolution that will affirm and demonstrate East Hampton's commitment to reproductive freedom and the right to a safe and legal abortion. Whereas abortion is a constitutional right and remains legal in all fifty states, and whereas access, whereas access to comprehensive reproductive health care, including abortion, contraception, prenatal care, labor and delivery services, and postpartum care are necessary for a person's overall health, and health care is a fundamental human right. And whereas a person's ability to access safe and legal abortion when they need it is also a critical component of their health and dignity, as well as independence, freedom, and social and economic equality. And whereas, when access to abortion is restricted, these restrictions harm most those who already face significant barriers to receiving high-quality health care, such as low-income individuals, immigrants, young people, people of color, and transgender and gender non-conforming people. And whereas, every person, regardless of race, gender identity, income level, and immigration status, should have access to the full range of reproductive health care, starting before they ever become pregnant, and including contraception, abortion, and prenatal and postpartum care. And whereas, abortion is one of the safest medical procedures in the United States, and experts at the National Academy of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine published a study in 2018 confirming that scientific evidence consistently indicates that legal abortions in the U.S., including those performed in the second trimester, are extremely safe. And whereas, on January 22, 1973, the U.S. Supreme Court, in a historic and landmark decision, ruled in Roe v. Wade that the U.S. Constitution safeguards a person's ability to make their own personal medical decisions about when or whether to have children. And whereas, the constitutional right to abortion has been affirmed in subsequent Supreme Court cases, including Planned Parenthood versus Casey, 1992, and Whole Woman's Health versus Hellerstedt, 2016. And whereas, the Trump-Pence administration are pursuing policies to ban abortion, defund reproductive health care providers, cut maternity coverage out of health plans, limit access to affordable birth control, and prohibit Medicaid from covering abortion care. And whereas, the Trump-Pence administration's hostile stance on abortion and reproductive and sexual rights have emboldened many states to continue further restrictive policies, including bans on abortion or trigger laws which would ban abortion outright if Roe v. Wade is overturned. And whereas, with the confirmation of Brett Kavanaugh in October 2018, the Supreme Court now considers, contains a majority of justices who may not interpret the Constitution to provide protection for the right to end a pregnancy and may overturn or severely limit Roe v. Wade. And whereas, many states, including Louisiana, Alabama, Kentucky, Georgia, and Missouri, have in direct conflict with Supreme Court precedent recently passed laws that ban or restrict access to legal and safe abortions, and similar measures have been proposed in several more states. And whereas, cities and towns have the power to mitigate efforts to deliberately erode the availability and affordability of abortion and undermine the protections provided by Roe v. Wade. And whereas, the Massachusetts State Senate is currently considering S-1209, an Act to Remove Obstacles and Expand Abortion Access, also known as the Roe Act, which has not been cosponsored by State Senator Donald Humison. And the Massachusetts House is considering H-3320, an Act to Remove Obstacles and Expanding Access to Women's Reproductive Health, cosponsored by State Representative Daniel Carey. Both bills would remove medically unnecessary abortion restrictions and inflammatory language from Massachusetts law, ensuring that a pregnant person can access abortion care after twenty-four weeks of pregnancy in the case of a fatal fetal diagnosis, and improve a young person's ability to receive trained support and safely access abortion care. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of East Hampton hereby states its commitment to the protection of abortion rights, reproductive health care rights, and individual rights to make reproductive decisions about their own bodies. Be it further resolved that the City Council of East Hampton does hereby support the immediate passage of Massachusetts Senate Bill S-1209, an Act to Remove Obstacles and Expand Abortion Access, and House Bill H-3320, an Act Removing Obstacles and Expanding Access to Women's Reproductive Health, to reinforce the Commonwealth's Constitution that recognizes the legal right to abortion. Be it further resolved that the City Council of East Hampton shall copy the resolution to be sent to U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren, U.S. Senator Edward J. Markey, U.S. Representative Richard Neal, Massachusetts Governor Charlie Baker, lead sponsor of S-1209, State Senator Harriet L. Chandler, lead sponsor of H-3320, State Representatives Patricia A. Haddad and J.D. Livingstone, State Senator Donald Humison, and State Representative Daniel Carey."
Second. We have a second, a motion a second to accept this resolution, so I'll give councilors a chance to speak. Counselor Coniff?
If we need to amend that to actually add Richard Neal?
He was...
Just by saying it, it was amended?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay, because it's not the original document.
Okay, so then you would feel better?
Well, we're gonna have to sign it later. Yeah, okay, because we'll...
Do you need a motion, Barb, you think?
No, I think, okay. Instead of James McGovern? No, both. Oh, both? Yeah.
Okay.
You didn't read McGovern.
No, I saw the note, and I'm sorry, I misinterpreted.
It was both.
Tell me, I don't have to start over.
No.
So do you...
I'll move that we amend.
I'll just send it to him.
Okay, we'll just...
Okay.
Yeah, that's not part of the...
Okay, Counselor Zera, I think I saw your hand.
I just wanted to make a statement, and I apologize, Counselor Coniff, because if I knew, I would've made this earlier and not spoken after you, so I apologize.
It's all right.
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming today and speaking their truth, to everyone who spoke their truth tonight, but especially to many of the people who are here, who shared some really personal and intimate experiences in this room that didn't necessarily need to be shared with everybody in East Hampton, and thank you for that. When the Roe Act bills were proposed in the Massachusetts State Legislature, I was pleased to see that our state's lawmakers were supporting women's rights to access to reproductive health care. As I watched neighboring cities pass resolutions in support, I knew that East Hampton would likely soon consider a similar resolution. Our current legislative paradigm is for men to make decisions for the reproductive rights of women. For good or bad, it's time for our strong female officials to lead on laws that affect their bodies. This is a place for men to follow and support, not to lead. We need to support the women in our lives to choose, our colleagues, our friends, mothers, sisters, and daughters. And as a parent of a daughter, I pray that she grows up knowing that her body belongs only to her, and that she has the fullest of health care options available to her. And if she became pregnant as a victim of rape, or coerced into intercourse, or any other situation where she felt abortion was an option, I'd support her. I was heartened when my friend and colleague, Counselor Ted Coniff, brought this forward. Access to appropriate women's reproductive health care that runs the entire spectrum of care, including safe abortion, should be an innate right, and one that women get to make. And creating such laws does not create a mandate to do anything, unless you think that everyone who spoke here today, that I don't respect your religious, or moral, or ethical, or personal beliefs around this, at the end of the day, this is about choice. Women are faced... Women are faced with the inequity of other people telling them what to do with their bodies, and an assumption of ownership over their body when they become pregnant. Can someone show me a similar scenario for men? No. It's because there isn't one. Why are we so obsessed with controlling women's bodies? Our society is still falsely based on a patriarchal premise that women's bodies are not entirely theirs, and that somehow it's up to them to tell them what we can or can't do with them. This is about equity. This is about choice. This is about a woman's freedom to make up her own healthcare choices, and it's about healthcare. Their body, their choice. So thank you, Counselor Coniff, for bringing this forward. Thank you to Laura Britton, who I know worked very hard on this, and everyone else who supported it. And I apologize that I spoke after you for the religious... I respect the community discussion here, and everyone who showed up to express all the views, and I am wholeheartedly playing the vote yes on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to start saying thank you, Counselor Coniff. I think you are really brave, bringing this forward. I cannot imagine how you feel now, after hearing all those stories. Especially, if someone asks to us if one of us was pregnant before, the answer is, of course, no. But I have three girls. I have four girls. I have a mom, and I have a wife, which is my partner, because I see her equally as me. Someone else said the reproductive justice. I can say the reproductive injustice start in Puerto Rico in the 1950s, when they used women's to try the birth control pills. That was sad, that they use my women's to try it, and they use their body to try it with other, with other consent. That wasn't right. Having three girls, I cannot imagine them not doing the same thing that I can do. And what I can do is, I'm control my body anyhow I want. And I cannot imagine any of my daughters not doing it. That's what is, that's why I'm in favor of this. Because what we're doing is giving the full rights to the women, as the same as the guys, to use their body anyhow they decide. After I'm saying that, I'm saying, I want to say that I grew up in a Catholic family. My daddy's a deacon in the Catholic Church. So I know probably then he's not going to be really happy with me. But I don't care about if he's happy with me, because I'm doing the right thing. I prefer to do the right thing to make my dad happy, just because he think different than I'm thinking in this moment.
Counselor Ristos, you next.
Okay. First, I wanted to thank Laura, who gave me some information. Last night at our committee meeting, we heard that the majority of the people in Massachusetts do not support Roe. And I believe in data. She gave me a Pew study, which was an unbiased independent study in 2014, indicating that 74% of the people of Massachusetts support these rights. So I don't think the word "majority" used last night against this was proper. I want to take a different approach, and Counselor Coniff, I actually wrote it down this evening, so I might speak a little more eloquently on it. A different approach, we can hope, thanks. A different approach to Roe that you all should consider, and a lot of you weren't here. I am repeating myself. But when Roe was decided in 1973, the primary judicial rationale by the Supreme Court was privacy. It's implicit in the Constitution. Privacy between a doctor and a patient, privacy between a lawyer and a client, privacy not allowing the state to interfere with many personal difficult decisions. A state in this world exists in which government decides medical procedures for its people. A state in this world exists which orders a family to refrain from having children in an effort to control population. A state that actually orders pregnancy termination. A state which does not allow urgent critical care to a senior which has reached the age of 60 with a serious diagnosis. Another effort to control population. A state exists in this world where privacy in all matters, not just medical, does not exist. Privacy is an unwritten but implicit freedom in the Constitution. To remove Roe would start us down the dangerous path to no privacy and the beginning of state interference in what are now and should remain private decisions. This is a freedom we should not take for granted. That was the underlying premise to Roe, and we have to remember that. And it is the primary reason that I will always support it, because it supports women, and all of us, all of us, the right to privacy. Lastly, as a man, and I dare any other man, Tamara, your comments really affected me, I just want you to know that. I'm not a woman. I wouldn't dare try to assume what a woman feels when it comes to these kinds of decisions. And any man that dares to tell a woman how to feel about this is not a man, but a coward. So although I've been at Smith College for 40 years, and I know what women go through, I may not be... Our council has to have more women representatives, but Peg, you're not alone in the male support for your actions. Thank you.
Counselor Burger.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to say thank you to everybody for coming out and sharing the stories that you shared. And I want to apologize to my colleagues for not having an eloquent statement, like some of you have said. I think that's, it's really, makes me feel good to sit at this table right now. You know, and I think one of the things from my perspective is I get to be on the front lines every single day as a health teacher and teaching comprehensive sex ed. And I'm a certified sexual educator. And for me, that is something I'm really proud about. You know, because it would be amazing if we could wave a wand and not have any more abortions. But that's not the reality. And, you know, until the time when everybody has equal access and free access to healthcare, I'm not going to stand by and allow these erosions to be continually chipping away at people's rights. And, you know, I might not have a uterus, but my two best friends have uteruses. And, you know, my wife and my daughter, and my daughter, I would never, I could never stand to be in a world where she wasn't respected, or she wasn't given all of the opportunities that she needed to seek her truth and to do what she needed to do for her healthcare. And, you know, I'm not going to sit idly by and let these things happen in our city, in our state, and in our country, as they are happening. And so I think that's why it's important for us to have a voice, and for us to say this right now. And that's all I have to say.
Counselor.
Thank you. I read my elegant statement the last time, but what I... You know, I wanted to also share that I grew up Catholic. I went to NDIC right here in town. You know, I was raised by, my mother was actually, right before her final vow of being a nun and swearing her life to God and the church, she met my father and changed plans.
Thank God.
Maybe.
That was weird.
There's consequences to these decisions.
I was also an altar boy. You know, I took church real, 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 real serious and everything growing up in life. And I think somebody said it earlier, there needs to be separation between church and state. You know, I definitely think that that speaks volumes here. And, you know, I, my wife and I, a lot of people shared stories. I don't want to get into things for HIPAA violations or whatever, but we did have some conversations around this. And it's hard, being on this side of the table, telling her, you know, "You do what you want to do," you know, and she's looking for opinions. And it's a real tough conversation. And I commend everybody that had to go through that, and thank you for this. And I know I'm in support of this, wholeheartedly. And thank you for bringing it to the table for East Hampton. Thanks.
Hey, Counselor Pink.
Pretty brief. So a lot of the conversations that we've had tonight have been... Let me back up. I wasn't raised religious. I just wasn't. I was raised by Scandinavians in there. They're not particularly religious. They're not particularly religious people. Most of them aren't. Most Swedes aren't particularly religious, and I wasn't raised particularly religious. And some people were, and I think that's beautiful, and it's awesome for them. But there's, I'm not the only person like that, right, in the world. And when people, when their faith drives them to behave a certain way or to make certain choices, then I completely respect that. And I would fight, you know, to the death for their right to make those decisions. But there are people like me who, whose lives are not governed by those, by those religions, right? And we also have a right to make, to govern our lives the way that we see us, right? You know, I don't love to talk about this stuff. It's quite uncomfortable. But I think it's important, because I've never seen so much discussion of religion in a city council chamber. At the end of the day, my, the question is about whether the state should compel somebody to do something that they wouldn't want to do, right? To take an act, a course of action, other than the one that they want. And beyond that, you know, I feel personally that when we have these discussions, we often look at these very, very broad debates. How do we define life? How do we, what is, you know, what are people's agencies? What we're talking about is the nine of us sending effectively a letter to two people who get to vote on a bill, right? And what we need to talk about is the bill. I've read the bill. It's only four pages. It's not extensive. What is in it, to me, is sensible, and that's all there is to say. It's the things here, we can have these broad debates about the place of morality in society, and that's, that's an awesome thing to talk about when we're not here. But right now, what we're talking about is a bill that makes a couple changes to what a person has to go through in order to get an abortion in cases where they feel like that's the right choice for them. And what is in here, to me, is sensible and decent, and I'll be supporting it.
Anyone, Counselor, I think. Does he hear him? Counselor Zera?
First of all, let me, I don't know if you saw, but I give you great credit when I'm standing up. Peg and I don't often agree on things. And sometimes, but we do our best to be civil about it and to learn, I think, I hope, from each other. I learned something tonight. I learned just how unsnarky you can be. I think, if you don't, Peg, you know, you know, she can, she can really lay on some sharp comments.
What?
Yes, you can. What you shared with us tonight strikes to the soul of being a human being, and I really respect that. So I am, I am very grateful for being here and having that experience. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry that you've gone through what you have in those issues. And I would work very hard to try to undo the damage that has been done. I want you to know that. That being said, I do have some questions about this. I like to see resolutions that have 100%, 98%, 95% unanimity. And generally, when we, when we deal with issues, when we dealt with the issues of nuclear power, nuclear weapons, when we dealt with migrants, it was very clear. It was very clear that we were unanimous in our, in our decisions. And the community, I believe, shared this almost to every member. We're never going to have everybody. I'm very troubled that many people spoke tonight and did not share the same opinions. And I, I'm concerned that passing a resolution unanimously will send a message about the city of East Hampton that doesn't share the opinions of those who spoke their minds, their beliefs, and their hearts on a subject that is important to everyone here. So I have that nagging feeling that somehow something isn't right by having unanimous resolution. I wanted to thank everyone for sharing their stories. I know I've grown very much by listening, and I'm very... I admire the ability to be able to share all your stories. I think deciding whether to have a child, whether to have a continuation of a pregnancy is very much of an individual decision. And I believe it's a healthcare right. So I've listened very carefully to everybody here. And no, I didn't come in here with my mind made up. Tamara, thank you for being here and lending your voice, as you always have, every time that we've had, we've had discussions. I believe that everyone should have equal and free access to abortions at any point in the pregnancy, from conception through to birth. And that it's a decision for someone between themselves and their doctor. I am very concerned, however, that at some point we separate church and state, and we do. We have an obligation to do that. I'm a Catholic. I grew up a Catholic. I was an altar server. But we have an obligation to separate. When we look at life and where it starts, is it at conception? Is it at fetal heartbeat? Is it at birth? Is it sometime after birth? I think the Supreme Court struggled very hard with that question in deciding Roe. And I think they made some good decisions. They enabled to show some respect for life, the unborn, and respect for the person making a decision about their own healthcare and their own life. I really like the way we kind of have the 24 weeks, okay? There's a time when it's very clear, the decision is very much an individual's decision, and there's a time when it's not. And maybe you can help me with this. And when I read in the current legislation, it talks about expelling a live birth. A child, a child who's alive.
The current.
The current legislation talks about that. The thought of having a live birth be terminated after birth is very troubling to me. How does that fit with the Roe Act?
Counselor Coniff.
That's actually not a thing. And I know that people talk about that, but what we're talking about is that 1%, less than 1% of an event after 24 weeks that would be so devastating less than 1% of an event after 24 weeks that would be so devastating that it would cause a decision that would not be 10 minutes before the ninth month. That's not a thing in this process. It's learning that the child that you so wanted has a fetal...a fatal fetal anomaly, and it will not live. And so the whole concept of this bill somehow extending it out until 20 minutes right after you go into labor, and you're like, you know what? I changed my mind. Abort it. That's not...that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a very specific scenario that today, after 24 weeks, in Massachusetts, you can have an abortion to protect the life of the mother. We are adding an additional step that says, in the case of a fatal fetal anomaly. Everything else in that scenario, people will tell you, you know, people use that, you know, you can abort right up until nine months. I don't know what they think women are thinking when they say that comment. I can't imagine that...that's so insulting, that we would carry a pregnancy and then just decide not to have it complete unless there was a terrible, terrible reality. And that's what I think we need to just keep our eyes on, that this is not...this is not a discussion about abortion. Abortion exists. It's legal. This is about specific changes in Massachusetts law to protect the women and the right to access health in the event that Roe v. Wade is overturned. That's what it is. There's not a Armageddon that's about to happen. There's not a tsunami of things that are going to happen that suddenly, you know, we're going to be knocking down doors to go have abortions. That is so insulting. And so, no, there's not a case where, you know, it's just not a thing. I don't even know how to respond to it. It's not a thing.
I certainly see the case of fatal fetal anomalies and the timing. 27 weeks, 26 weeks, whenever...
It's between you, the woman, and the doctor.
When that occurs, that should be respected, I believe, in the advice, state code, state law. And I would...I agree with that wholeheartedly.
Mr. President, I move the question.
Second.
Are you done?
Okay, so the question...and there's already is a second. I believe we already...well, since there is a motion, a second.
This is a motion to end debate.
Right. Counselor Kaczynski has finished. Is there anyone else has anything to say? I will just...30 seconds, I know you have to be...
I remove the motion.
Because we already have a motion at the table.
Let him speak. He gets to speak.
I'm not gonna...no, everything has been said, but just from a technicality point, this is a resolution. Some people have mentioned bills and legislation. This is not...we are not passing any kind of ordinance. We're passing a resolution which is in support of bills in front of the Senate and House. If you feel strongly about either side, please contact representatives and make your voice no. That is my only last point. So we have motion and a second. Do we want a roll call or just adjourn?
I don't need one, but that's up to you.
Okay, let's not. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion passes.
Move. We have a five-minute break.
Oh, and you have to get a new signature.
I still have to sign the 18,000, too.
At least he did it online.
Yes.
Okay, now I just want to know what was it?
Hey, Joe? Can we clear the room?
We gotta finish this meeting. Come on. Okay, everybody, thank you so much for your attention.
So you need to be here?
We need to keep going. Everybody go outside and congratulate yourselves. You're welcome to continue your conversations outside.
Or stick around for an educational city council meeting. You always bail and flash and stuff starts going inside this room.
Did you go?
No, because I was talking to people.
All right.
Maybe like around noon? Is that cool?
That was your chance.
That's part of the meeting.
Come on, JP. I want to go home and eat, JP. Let's go.
I still have to wait for Omar.
He's right behind you.
He's running. Isn't actually a thing. I love it. At least you have your breast cancer awareness slippers on.
Is that one finance, Counselor Rist?
Oh, we are...okay. Finance. Mr. President, I will announce that we have a 6:00 PM meeting next week.
Lose everybody in the audience.
This is the best part of the meeting.
6:00 PM next week, instead of 5:00. On the 9th for a finance meeting, 6:00. Could you inform the...that's to deal with the Board of Assessors' scheduled tax recitation. Could you inform Lori and the Board of Assessors of that need for them to be there?
6:00 PM, though.
6:00 PM to accommodate Mr. Lynch, which is always a pleasure to do.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Did they ask for a public hearing on the subject?
Yeah.
Not until November, so I'd rather...
So we can wait to...
I'll do...well, wait a minute. This is the first...yeah, we're gonna do it the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Public Safety, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just had a meeting yesterday. We're still working on the language and reviewing all the new proposals, ordinance that we have in our committee. So we're gonna keep having the discussion at the committee level. We sent a month ago a letter to DPW. We're still waiting for their answer, so I give you a copy. We sent a copy to all the councils about that letter. We haven't any response from them yet. Assume we could respond, I will let you all know what was the response.
What was that about?
What was it about, the letter?
The letter was a recommendation to see if we can work together about the safety of the pedestrian in Clark...
Clark Street.
Clark Street. And see how we can mitigate the velocity of the speed of the vehicle in that area and some other areas in the city for the safety of the pedestrians. Basically, there was the letter to DPW, and we, like I said, we sent there like a month ago. I know they met. Probably they talked about it, but we didn't have any official response from them. Besides that...you want to say something?
No. Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. Besides that, we don't have anything else for the old businesses. Our next meeting is going to be November 12 at 6:00 PM.
November 12?
Yes.
This is October.
And you met last night?
And we met yesterday.
Yeah. We get you. I got you. So the normal meeting day is...
And yes, we moved the...
I got you.
Supposed to be November 5, but the day, the election day, so we moved it to November 12. That's the reason, is November 12. We have a request from Counselor Rist, and I'm gonna let him do the request to...
Yes, a piece of new business. I request that the Public Safety Committee take action. I hereby request the Public Safety Committee reexamine the need for a traffic light at the intersection of Main and South Street, as had been done during the past council term. I request that the committee take the lead in advocating for the light and any improvements to the safety of this intersection through the State Department of Transportation. This request asks that it act on the council's behalf to see that this urgent and necessary safety measure is approved by DOT while working with the mayor's office, the Department of Public Works, and our state senator and state representative. The committee shall report frequently to the council on the progress on this issue and whether action by the full council may be necessary. I request that this be sent to the Public Safety Committee for review.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to move to a public safety discussion about the traffic lights, Main and South Street, promoting it. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion passes. Counselor Lurin. Lynch, did you have...
Yeah, so my question is, I guess, just on a formality. So we've requested a letter, and now we're gonna have this on our agenda, that we're gonna be communicating with the DPW and the Board of Public Works. And we sit there, sent the letter a couple months ago, and still have no, you know, feedback back, you know, any response. What kind of accountability is there on that?
I mean, we can do it a couple ways. I would say the chair certainly can make the telephone call and say, well, so if you're, you know, I know Joe has been out. I don't know how long he's been out, but I don't know. But he's back now. But so either if you would like to, and then, or if not, then I will as well come, you know, but I think that's probably the next step.
Okay.
And then the mayor, if that's...if it needs to be, Counselor Rist.
My purpose is that I've been advocating for this, but I think a committee should do it, the committee that did it before. Counselor Derby says he has a huge file on what was happening before. You could review that. But when we get a roadblock, the mayor may say to you, because he said he was gonna meet with you, that DOT is saying, we can't do it because I don't want you to accept that. That's what I think the council should be telling you. We need this light, and I'm urging you. And then you bring it back to us. If you say, this is what they're saying, and we don't know what to do, then, I don't know. We call...I think Dan Carey will certainly be...he was on the committee. He's certainly gonna be in favor of it. I was told that political action is all...we have to fight data action, which is, is there enough accidents, or is there enough traffic, et cetera, to warrant a light? We have to fight that with political action. We have to put pressure on them. Let's wait and see if that's necessary, but I'm not letting this go, and I'm asking you guys to help me out, and you take the lead by meeting with the mayor and this guy Massey and see what's going on. Maybe the next time, you may have a meeting request prior to the next council meeting, if I heard correctly.
I guess I was confused when you talked about a letter. I thought you were referring to the Carp Street, but you...
Correct. And then we're gonna be looking for feedback, you know, and collaboration with the Board of Public Works on this, and we haven't had a positive trail in the past, you know, with...
I don't think the Board of Public Works will that be helpful in this case, because it is such a state issue. I think it's pressure applied from emphasizing the importance of the safety of that intersection. As I said, as Counselor Rist mentioned, Counselor Derby probably has a lot of data on that.
That's fine.
And you're on the committee, right, Sam?
Yes, here.
Not question mark. Exclamation point.
I have just a sort of unrelated question. Given that public safety had the quadricycle restriction, and we just passed the separate bike...do you feel that still needs to be on the agenda, or is that redundant? Or I'm just curious.
Yeah, do you know, actually, that's a good point, Counselor Derby, and they're written, kind of, how do quadricycles fit into the new bike ordinance? And is there a need for it to still be addressed in public safety, do you think?
Well, there's still the issue of our roads.
Okay, cool.
Right, is that...did I...
So this is not the main handrail to...
Right, because that was only...okay, I understand.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying for me as well.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess it stays.
Let me just double check. Are we...yes, because, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We have to ask for extension for a few things, because we now we have to move the limit to November 12. In a...let me see, there's a few. I want to ask for 90-day extension, for a motion to request the review on street parking restriction and traffic rules and orders. Can I do all of them?
Yeah, just do them all, yeah.
Yeah, okay. The pedestrian safety review, the proposal amendment, the traffic rules and order, crosswalk and penalties, proposal outdoor events policy, and quadricycle restriction proposal.
Second.
Motion, a second, to have a 90-day extension, some of the previously read topics. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion passes. Appointments, Counselor Coniff.
So we met this evening. We had two appointments. The first, Deborah August, to the Conservation Commission with the term expiration 12/31/2021. I spoke with Deborah. She has lived here, I want to say, 10, 12 years. I apologize, Deborah, if I have that wrong. She has been going to the Conservation Commission meetings for the last two and a half years. She started going because there was an issue behind her house that she wanted to make sure was taken care of appropriately, which is awesome, because that's what we have these meetings for. And that was...so the overarching thing was denied, and she just has kept going, because she really, really enjoys wildlife and conservation. And she had a quote that I really liked where she said, "This is really about fairness and justice for animals, land, and our neighbors," which I thought was great. So, yeah, I will make a motion to...we approved both Deborah and Kasyakov. The next one, three to zero, in our meeting. So I'll make a motion to approve Deborah August to the Conservation Commission, the term expiration of 12/31/2021.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve Deborah August, Conservation Commission. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion passes.
We had another nomination, mayoral nomination, for Kasyakov for the EDIC, 12/31/2021. She has lived here all of two and a half months. She came here from Waltham. She wanted to...she's a telecommuter for her job, so she can pretty much live... can pretty much live anywhere. She wanted to get a better quality of life and she has found that here. She, yep, she was referred by someone else on the EDIC. She is a supporter, no, actually, she told me quite incredulously and with joy in her heart that she already has friends and she's only been here two and a half months. Get used to it.
We are a welcoming community.
Exactly, so she said the quality of life is so great here, everyone has been incredible and she is ready now to give back after two and a half months, so. I said, what took you so long, but. And, yes, she has a dog, yes, it's a beagle, named Latana, and four years old. I will make a motion to approve, yeah, hang on, Kassie Akov to the EDIC, 12/31/2021.
Okay, motion, a second to approve, Kassie to the.
EDIC.
Additional questions or comments? All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
We have a new nomination for next time for Jennifer Gallin, oh, we already moved that, never mind.
Are you meeting it?
Hang on. Snarky is back.
And we missed it.
Our next meeting is on October 16th at 5:30, thus concludes.
Thank you. Ordinance, Council Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President, we met on the 26th of September and we are going to meet again on October 8th at 5:15. Looks like I have a little housekeeping to do. I'd like to, in the form of a motion, ask for a 90-day extension to cannabis equity and the commercial quadricycle ordinance.
Second. Okay, motion, a second for 90-day extension for the cannabis equity and the commercial quadricycle ordinance, additional questions or comments? All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Thus concludes.
Property, Council Krasinski.
We have the announcement of the first opportunity to review some of the plans that the consultant for the dog park are putting together and this is kind of be like a preview meeting. I don't expect a lot of, of discussion at that, just to hear the consultant, look at the, look at the reports, kind of get a sense, there may be an opportunity to cut back one or two and then remove three more or all, all, all the locations to a meeting in November after the election. It'll be a public forum to be determined and I'm thinking it'll be somewhere mid, mid-month to just before Thanksgiving, when we'll be able to have a full forum of really robust conversation about the dog parks. And that being said, I'd like to do a little bit of housekeeping with regard to the city-owned property until we can have our, a, a, a meeting to talk about that. I do foresee that being removed from the agenda shortly, but I'd like to have a property meeting about that, so we can discuss it, the benefits of that. So, could I have a 90-day extension for the city inventory?
Motion, a second for 90-day extension for the city-owned inventory property agenda item, additional questions or comments? All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
And I wanted to bring up something that we're gonna be seeing in the near future with regard to Ferry Street and One Ferry Street project, there will be some easements that will be required, especially by the pond area to, to enable there to be some development works, public funds to be used to bring that area into a nice setting, safe, and we'll be looking at those easements probably to be introduced at the next meeting. Just a heads up, this concludes.
What is the meeting?
The property subcommittee meeting, I'm sorry, gosh, thank you. October 23, October 23, Wednesday, 6:15 for the dog park.
Great, can I, can I say that concludes?
That concludes.
Try to review, commit, do we have any more, can I come off?
All I can say is, he is actively, he's, he being City Attorney Tanner, is actively dealing with a huge document, we're running up a bill, but it is our constitution and he's very thorough. I expect that when I get it back, I'll be consulting with you, Mr. President, as to whether or not we need a committee review of what he's talking about or whether the council could review it, you know, to see where, what we want to do with editing what he's gonna ask, so we'll find out, but he did tell me he's working on it. That concludes.
That was all business, I, oh, so we have to approve the warrant. Right, so this is the last bit of business, if there is, the housekeeping to, for the council to pass the warrant of the upcoming election, which is Tuesday, November 5, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, for mayor, city councils at large, for district city councils, five, so we'll come in November 6, and for ballot questions, so I'm taking a motion to.
Motion to approve.
Approve the warrant of the election.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. I think we're done, folks, are we adjourned?
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Motion, passing. See you in October, thanks for your participation.
I wonder if we can get into the, Barbara Bobbard, Book of Records, to find out if it's the longest meeting we were.